Alright, good afternoon everyone, it's three o'clock, let's go ahead and call this meeting to order. First item on the agenda will be the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, looks like we have a full house, so I'll ask you guys to take your time right now to silence your phones.
Doug is online.
Doug's online, okay. So, let's go ahead and have roll call. In attendance, we have Carol, Bob, Ed, and myself, and I do need a motion for allowing Doug to fully participate in this meeting remotely due to exceptional circumstances.
Still moved.
I second that.
Alright, we have a motion on the floor in a second, on favor?
Aye.
Can you hear us Doug?
Thank, yep, thank you.
Alright, so we have approval of the final agenda?
Uh, Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'm assuming that they're gonna make some comments under, uh, public comment. I was wondering if we could move Agenda Item 15A up in the agenda to after the consent agenda items. So, in between Agenda Items nine and 10, to put in 15A. So that they don't have to stay till the entire meeting, because that is the very last, um, item on the agenda.
I'd second that.
I don't have a problem with that, is that your motion?
Yes.
And then we have a second, on favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then...
Thanks Carol.
Let's go ahead and Chelsea, where's Chelsea at?
She's trying to get a, uh...
I have, I have the public comment stuff, so...
I know, but there was one item that I, I wanted to move to. Chelsea, what was the, what was the item that I needed to move ahead? Okay.
So, flip flap FNG under 11?
Or why not just take 11G first?
That's what I'm saying, because if we're making changes, then it will affect the budget discussion, so that'll, that'll be my motion.
F will be G and G will be F.
I would agree.
Alright, so second on favor?
Aye.
So, F will be G and G will be, alright. Okay, so we're all set, let's go ahead and public comment, and just as a reminder, we have three minutes, we ask you to stand up on the podium, state your name, and you be calling them out?
Yep, um, I have quite a few, um, Rod Senior also has to speak online, what I'll do is I'll call up the people who are speaking about an agenda item first, and then I have two items to read in that are regarding agenda items, and then I'll put the non-agenda item comments. And I'll let, I'll have Rod speak at the end of the agenda item comments, I'm assuming his is regarding an agenda item, so... Three. And there, there's a, there is a thing on the edge of the podium here, when you see it start flashing yellow, wrap it up, because you're almost done. Uh, first up, we have Ed Hedges, uh, regarding Item 11A, Pelican Fire Credits, and then I'll start the clock once you state your name.
Ed Hedges, 10532 Azura Drive, and also the Vice Chair of the PPAC. It's my understanding that we have over 800,000 in fire credits, uh, that are going to expire within a year. And their likelihood of being extended again is not very good. Um, I guess I would ask the board to consider increasing the incentives to sell, to get those sold. Either increasing the discount and possibly the incentive paid to the broker. If we can get anything for them, 50 cents on the dollar, 30 cents on the dollar, would probably be better than leaving 800, the whole, the whole 800,000 dollars on the table, so anything we can get for them would be advantageous, so, I'd like you to consider that.
Ed, do you know the current incentive?
Uh, Bob, let's just wait for the questions or have, uh, just not to get, not to take up his minutes.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know what the exact...
I know there is a number out there right now.
Yes, I talked to Chelsea tomorrow, so she can give us that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chelsea, would you just let Bob?
Yep, Pat Hayes is here for his presentation later, but the, uh, contract that you've authorized him to is up to 30% discount.
Okay.
Alright, and now starts the rule of all the ones for the same agenda item, these are all regarding Item 15A. Uh, first up is Carol Brockie.
My name is Carol Brockie, I live in Pelican Preserve and have for the last 23 years. Pelican Preserve has been under the, uh, connectivity rule for those 23 years. Uh, for the convenience of WCI, the then-developer of Pelican Preserve, um, they put Pelican Preserve into the Gateway CDD. Uh, and despite the fact that it is the only community that is in the city, and a 55 and older community. Pelican Preserve does not use Gateways pools or parks. Uh, Pelican has five pools of its own and its own amenities, which we pay dearly for. Uh, we pay for our own lights, our own landscaping, our own signs, our own monuments, our own irrigation. Uh, within the community, as also a, a long tree line. It is inconceivable that we would be required to pay for lights, signs, landscaping, et cetera, when we already pay for those things in Pelican Preserve. It's like asking those of us to pay for North Fort Myers roads, lights, when we drive through those areas. I ask that Pelican Preserve be grandfathered into the connectivity rule. And for, if we need to discuss this further, that we spend some time and also involve all the residents of Pelican Preserve, uh, as to, uh, what is happening and, and their costs. Uh, we need to keep everybody informed, and, um, we need also to realize that Pelican is a separate entity, uh, even though we are part of, uh, part of Gateway. We have different, uh, setup, city, and rules and costs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, next up is Tom Shaner, same agenda item.
Thank you Supervisors, I'm Tom Shaner, I'm the Vice President of the Pelican Preserve Community Association. Uh, speaking on behalf of our communities to 2,498 homes and over 5,000 residents, I just want to let you know I'm in, uh, opposition to Agenda Item 15A interconnectivity and the discussion as proposed by Mr. Tinkle. Um, yes, it's only a discussion. Uh, as privileged by supervisor remarks, but based on the following thoughts, I think this just discussion should be nipped in the bud. The interconnectivity rule exception was originally adopted to provide an equitable solution to charging CDD residents, those from Pelican Preserve, a 55-plus community, for assets to which they do not have access, nor a need to use, nor do they impact. Uh, it's true sound logic at the time, and remain, that was true sound, like, true sound logic at the time, and it remains so today, 20 years after its implementation. True, Florida Statute 190.0353 does authorize the CDD to establish rates and raise revenues. However, as noted in the statute, such rates, fees, and rentals and charges shall be just inequitable and uniform to users of all classes. The equi, the, the critical concept here is that of being fair and equitable. Elimination of an existing interconnectivity clause would significantly violate that condition. Mr. Tinkle clearly points out in his statement attached to today, today's agenda, the Chapter 6 exemption due to interconnectivity was intended to provide equitable and uniform rates. Seeing that nothing has changed in terms of the residents of Pelican Preserve having access to the amenities of Gateway, sound logic dictates that what was fair and equitable 20 years ago remains so today. There have been no modifications to existing conditions that support a proposed change. There is no logic to eliminate the interconnectivity clause beyond one that is unfair and inequitable. Additionally, legal research supports that notion that judges tend to want to keep status quo when something has existed for 20 years and nothing of significance has changed. 20 years of reliance and equity cannot simply be thrown out in a quest to unfairly find funds to inequitably support programs and services of Gateway. Again, we've had no impact, and I see my latest, no, that's a green light, okay.
You have 30 seconds.
30 seconds, alright. Uh, Mr. Tinkle points out that the residents of Pelican Preserve do however enjoy many of the services provided by your various businesses, and I would say our money goes to paying their fees to come into, uh, to the Gateway taxes. The logic that Pelican Preserve residents may use the many businesses and services Gateway is further flawed by the fact that people from throughout southwest Florida area use these services. Are they to be taxed too? Ergo, to avoid a discussion on interconnectivity, does the Board of Supervisors prefer Pelican, Pelican Preserve residents to stop supporting the businesses over here? I don't think so. Um, does Mr. Tinkle's proposition take into consideration that any change to the relationship between Gateway CDD and Pelican Preserve would also lead to the residents of Gateway having to pay 2/3 of the approximate...
I'm gonna ask you to wrap it up.
Thank you, I'm done, thank you.
If you would like to include that, if you didn't read all of it, you can just pass it on to...
I'll get it.
Yeah, I can, I can lie.
I got it.
Okay, alright, um, next up is Francis Iannucci.
Thank you, Francis Iannucci, I am, I live at 12230 Country Day Circle in Daniels Preserve, I'm the President of the Daniels Preserve HOA and represent the board and the residents. I, I've become aware of this interconnectivity rule, I read as much as I could on it. Um, this is a rule that was adopted 20 years ago. The conditions that may have been present at the time 20 years ago, um, may have supported this, I don't think it supports it anymore. Uh, very simply, we're all residents of Gateway, we all share the same roads, the same facilities, we don't fly over them, we all ride on them, we share the same facilities, the same parks, the same roads. Uh, we can all serve on the board, and I think it only stands to reason that now, things have changed, and I think we should all contribute. And that's the position of me, my board, and the residents of Daniels Preserve. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I have two, two comments to read in regarding the same agenda topic, and then I'll move on to the non-agenda comments.
Thank you.
Uh, first one is from Nancy Straw, these were both received via email. Um, GSCDD public comment for July 18th Board of Supervisors meeting from Nancy Straw, 10-505 Diamante Way, Fort Myers, Pelican Preserve resident. Regarding an item on today's agenda for the Board of Supervisor meetings, it was Topic 15 Supervisor Comments and Reports Interconnectivity Discussion as proposed by Mr. Tinkle. In reviewing the agreement that was approved in 2005 between GSCDD and Pelican Preserve, nothing has changed. It was and continues to be a sound and logical solution to paying for assets and programs that benefit those who live in the GSCDD area but do not live in Pelican Preserve. GSCDD's decision to spend more on those assets and programs changes nothing about the agreement. Pelican Preserve is a 55-plus community without direct access to Gateway amenities and programming. Pelican Preserve residents do not have access to GSCDD amenities or programs without first traveling outside of the GSCDD service area. The build-out of amenities within GSCDD should not be considered for any payment or reimbursement from residents of Pelican Preserve. The agreement provides a fair solution to covering the cost of assets and programs that Pelican Preserve residents do not use. We have the same amenities and more within our own community of Pelican Preserve, and no need for those GS, those GSCDD provides. Florida Statute 190 dot 0353 related to GSCDD notes that "Rates, fees, rentals, and charges shall be just and equitable and uniform for users of the same class." Elimination of the existing interconnectivity clause would significantly violate the condition of fair and equitable. Mr. Tinkle clearly points out in his statement attached to today's agenda that the Chapter 6 exemption due to interconnectivity was intended to provide equitable and uniform rates. There have been no modifications to existing conditions that support the proposed change. An agreement that has been in place for 20 years without any significant changes indicates that status quo should be maintained. Pelican Preserve residents using business services in Gateway is not the point. Should everyone from southwest Florida who uses them also be taxed? Or should all residents of GSCDD's service area help to pay for the $3-plus million that is spent in Pelican Preserve each year by GSCDD? There should not be any changes to the interconnectivity agreement. I oppose Mr. Tinkle's proposal and see no need for the matter to be discussed further. Regards, Nancy Straw. And this one is from Fay Formoso. Public comment for Agenda Item 15A. We strongly oppose Mr. Tinkle's proposal. The interconnectivity rule exception was originally adopted to provide an equitable solution to charging CDD residents, those from Pelican Preserve, a 55-plus community, for assets to which they do not have access or a need to use. It was sound logic at the time and remains so 20 years after its implementation. Florida Statute 190 dot 0353 doesn't, does authorize a CDD to establish rates and raise revenue. However, as noted in the statute, such rates, fees, rentals, and charges shall be just and equitable and uniform for users of the same class. The critical concept here is that of being fair and equitable. Elimination of the existing interconnectivity clause would significantly violate that condition. Mr. Tinkle clearly points out in his statement attached to today's agenda that the Chapter 6 exemption due to interconnectivity was intended to provide equitable and uniform rates. Seeing that nothing has changed in terms of the residents of Pelican Preserve having greater access to the amenities of Gate, of Gateway, sound logic dictates what was fair and equitable 20 years ago remains so today. There are no grounds for further discussion. Why? Because there's no logic to eliminate the interconnectivity clause beyond one that is unfair and inequitable. Additionally, legal research supports the notion that judges tend to want to keep a status quo when something has existed for 20 years and nothing of significance has changed. 20 years of reliance and equity cannot simply be thrown out in a quest to unfairly find funds to inequitably support programs and services of Gateway that are not enjoyed nor expected by the residents of Pelican Preserve. Best, Fay Formoso, President, Pelican Preserve Community Association. That was Fay. Uh, then I have two non-agenda items, and then Rod will get to you after those. Uh, first up is Victor, uh, regarding the public art installation.
Hi, good afternoon, uh, Board Supervisors, my name's Victor Dotres. Um, I serve as the Chair for the City of Fort Myers Public Art Committee. Uh, we meet once a month, like you guys, our meetings run a couple hours, I'm not sure how long you guys run here. Seems like you guys have a lot of important things to deal with, this interconnectivity clause, sounds like you got a, you know, a, a, a long time to discuss that. I, I'm a little disappointed because of, uh, as, as the Chair for the Public Art Committee, I don't know if you guys have noticed, but there have been many artworks that have been popping up along MLK Junior, uh, along the river basin, uh, and so we've, we've been spreading artwork throughout the community, not just in certain words, but we're trying to spread the artwork throughout the words, and a couple months ago, I spoke with the, the HOA, uh, Community Manager for Public, uh, Pelican Preserve. He told me I needed to speak with you folks, um, and then, um, I spoke with Daniel. Uh, he told me, he got me connected with you, I spoke with you, Madam Chair. Um, and then I was told I was gonna be on the agenda item for today, the, the City's Public Art Consultant. Uh, thank goodness he didn't make the drive out here, because he wasn't able to be here. So I guess I signed up myself to just talk to you guys about it. I just heard that the Advisory Committee for the, uh, Pelican Preserve took the agenda item off. You know, and, and it's, it's a shame, because the City of Fort Myers is willing to practically give, um, two beautiful Carmona sculptures to place on the intersection, the T-intersection, right there, Colonial Boulevard and Tree Line. And, and they're, they're not that big, they're very beautiful, I don't know if you guys have seen them before. And the plan is that the City of Fort Myers, the Public Art Committee, was trying to spread the artwork. We don't just want it downtown, we want it everywhere. And then when you drive through Ward 6, a beautiful ward like, that we have, I'm, I'm, I live right there, a, a, across the street from you guys, a, and, and and here's an opportunity, doesn't cost you any money, costs you a $50 solar powered light from Amazon. The city will take care of the maintenance of these two sculptures. I was thinking we could put one on one corner, one on the other corner. Uh, they would just enhance the community, enhance the drive while you're sitting at the red light. Um, I would ask the, the, the Board Supervisor, would you please give me a chance to wait yet another month? Come on here with the public, the public art consultant, have him explain to you what the sculptures look like. Go back to your community, your 5,000 residents, and see who loves artwork out there. Who would love to see a couple pieces of artwork stay there for, for years, for the next 100 years. Those two pieces of artworks will be there for you guys. I just, I just need an okay from you guys, and let me tell you, we spoke with Councilwoman Bong. Uh, we, we looked around the area in Ward 6, and we thought that was a beautiful, uh, location right there. Tree Line, Colonial, that T-intersection right there, right in front of the two signs. Um, I had, I had photographs of the sculptures ready for you guys to see, I don't think you guys ever got a chance to see them. Um, a yellow light. Again, my name's Victor Dotres, I'm the Chair of the Public Art Committee. Um, we would love to put two beautiful sculptures on the corners of that T-intersection, we just need the green light from you folks. I'd ask you guys to please put me on the agenda item, and keep me on the agenda item, so I can come and make a proper presentation to you guys.
Thank you, Vicar.
Thank you very much.
Keep the board, uh...
Yep, so the agenda item actually went to P-PAC first, P-PAC weighed in on it at their last committee, and they deferred the item and decided not to move forward with the public art. Um, if this board so chooses, we can take up the matter with Victor. Um, her, one of the big questions that P-PAC had was the proper location of it, so maybe that's something we can work through with staff. Not to go against what P-PAC said, but, um, it...
Because we were unaware of location, and, and there was a lot of discussion, you know, is it gonna be in a center median, like, where is the locat, location, and I think there was concern regarding the, um, the length of the agreement, I thought it was 20 years, with a, a three-year consulate, so they had some concerns, so...
If you, if you want us to entertain the notion to work with Victor and, and his team, we'd be more than happy to, but like I said, P-PAC's voted against.
P-PAC seen what was being proposed.
Yes, yes.
So they saw it.
Yes.
And, and they were concerned.
I think there were also, uh, I think the members of P-PAC also, uh, were commenting that there was, there would be no place to park. How could people get out, walk around the sculptures, see them, appreciate them? Um, if you're just looking at a flyby, that's one thing, but, um, where, where would they park? How would they get there? Uh, could they really appreciate the sculptures just by going by it real fast? Uh, I think there were other questions besides that. And within, uh, past the gatehouse itself, I think they, uh, basically, um, said that there wouldn't be any space large enough uh, that isn't already taken up with something else.
Correct.
So, um, I think all those things need to be addressed before it would be brought back to either this board or to P-PAC.
Well, I think you, hey...
Go back to P-PAC.
And that's what I was thinking, maybe have Victor give a presentation with P-PAC.
That's really good.
I would have loved an opportunity to be there. Madam Chair. No one let me...
Go, go ahead Doug.
Madam Chair, if I could, um, I, I think that what the committee or the gentleman had stated, that they identified some location. I think the, the most important thing to do is have them come in and present what their, um, ideas are, and then we can help um, identify proper areas, uh, that may or may not be in consideration today, so I, I, I think going back to P-PAC is not the, the pertinent um, next step. I think we allow them to come back in, do a presentation, we understand they're, you know, a little bit more about what they're proposing, and then we can look at, are there, uh, are there, uh, uh, available areas where it would be, um, reasonable, uh, for us to consider, so... That's what I would do.
Are you suggesting someplace other than in the city? Because I don't think that's an option.
Well, I... See, Ward 6 is, Ward 6, that's artwork. Yeah.
The only people in Gateway that are in the city are in Pelican. So...
Oh, so, so it has to be within the city, okay, I'm sorry, I missed, uh...
C5 as well, right?
Yeah, so what I would, uh, I'd be happy to work with Victor, bring back, uh, some viable options, have staff work with him, find some locations, and let them come through at the board level and present.
I disagree with that entirely, I like to have the staff work done, but it's gotta go back to P-PAC. If they voted down, that's the end of it for me. Unless you consider a C5, that's something different. If it's a C5, it's not in Pelican, so be it. That's my opinion.
Either way, it's district property, so where...
Well, no, 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 no. You're not gonna put something in Pelican.
It is.
That the residents don't want.
But, well, the location that he's asking for is the GSCDD property in Pelican, it's not in, in an association, although a private community, so... But I, I do think there was a lot of questions that the committee did have, like to Carol's point. Location was a big one, and like, how did they, they appreciate it in the contract, I'm just going off memory, because I was in attendance at the meeting, um, so...
But in due deference, Flavia, yeah, the road is in, in Gateway, but the people that pay for the road are Pelican.
I, I believe the location that Victor, correct me if I'm wrong, is...
It's by the monument, it's, it's not, it's not...
It doesn't belong to Pelican, it belongs to...
It belongs to what?
Yeah.
We shouldn't be, hey, hey guys, we shouldn't be debating this in public comments, we take it away...
For Colonial Tree Line roads, Pelican does, nobody else.
Would you work with Victor, adding it back to us?
Come back to you or is it P-PAC?
P-PAC.
Is that what the rest of you guys want?
P-PAC may buy it.
I don't think you're...
You're assuming they're not gonna do it. Let's try the right way first. If they fail there, then I'll be open to doing it here.
Then I'll ask Carol and Doug, what are your thoughts? P-PAC will come back to us.
Last I thought, we were all one district.
That's what I, 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 I...
I like the way you do that.
We're all one district.
We've never been one district in terms of ponds.
We've been in district.
Okay.
But, okay.
So I got, I got you.
I know you don't, we've never been one district when it comes to the year.
Doug, you wanna bring it back to P-PAC, or you wanna bring it back to the board, I'm sorry, I forgot what you said.
Uh, I, I think, I, I would, I would send it back to staff and let staff determine next steps.
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Staff sent me here though.
What was that? Go back to staff.
I'll work with you. Alright.
I guess Chelsea get it.
So we just passed it to you.
We will address it.
That's where I started though, guys, three months ago, but Dan, you guys, I'm sorry to take up all your time, you guys have got a lot of important issues, I'm sorry. Thank you guys.
Thank you. Alright, um...
You guys are bound and determined to have P-PAC resign.
We have, uh, next up is Derek, and I'm not even gonna try to, to say your last name, um, it's regarding his fence in the LME.
Good afternoon, my name's Derek Tvekis, uh, I live at 12893 Pastors Way. Uh, uh, probably will take all three minutes. Um, I put a fence in five years ago, found out a few months ago, it was six feet into the LME. Um, HOA approved it, uh, but they did make a note at the bottom that it, it couldn't be in the LME without a CDD approval, I missed that, that's on me. Um, I got two notices, I followed up with, um, Randy and Daniel Potter. Uh, and I talked to the contractor, and they said, as long as it's not in the way, uh, or the contractor says it's not in the way, I can work around it. I got an email from Daniel Potter saying, "We will work around your fence, however, if it gets in the way, we'll remove it." Um, I believe we're done with the lake maintenance at, uh, Daniels Preserve, I believe it's completed. I was on vacation last week, and the contractors came to rip my fence out without telling me. Um, luckily, the neighbor called me, I got, got ahold of Daniel, he said, "You need to go to the board meeting this Thursday, or it's being removed ASAP." I am here, my question is twofold, I have all the paperwork to do an easy use agreement. Will this be honored if I fill it out, uh, and if so, will you please not rip my fence out for two weeks, uh, while I get this submitted?
Do you wanna get Daniel here, because I just want a clarification, because, yep, I know the construction of that particular pond is done, but not the maintenance, and when you mentioned maintenance, maintenance is perpetuity, so, and I think that's what he meant, because...
And often the, the structures don't interfere with the, with the construction of the lake, but once the ponds are back up to the proper level and they have to do maintenance, they do.
I completely understand. I, I guess my question is, is the board still honoring maintenance use agreements? Is it a waste of my time to even complete everything, if you're just gonna shut it down? Does that make sense?
My, my thing is, I don't know how far...
That's what is gonna be my question.
To me, like, I have to, I have to decide, or have to have, well, it's six feet now, but control of the water level, it's not as high as it, it needs to be, so my concern is when the water level is high, then maintenance will be a, not, so I guess I'll, I'll defer to Daniel, because I, I'm gonna add on this one.
Uh, 12893 Pastors Way, and it's been up for five years, and it's never been an issue.
This is Daniels.
Yes, sir.
Daniels Preserve.
Yep, I'll, I'll fill all the paperwork out, and if you tell me no, I'll, I'll pay someone to move it, but it's six feet times 25 is 150 square feet, I play with my kids, I, I'd love to keep it if, if you guys are gonna let me do an LME agreement, if not, I'll, I'll move it.
Daniel Potter, Public Works Director. Uh, even though the maintenance is an ongoing item there, I, I, I concur with Flavia, if the water levels come up, it might be an issue. Uh, sure, the contractor doesn't mind getting his wheels wet when he's putting in things that he's installing, uh, but as far as it goes to the, the maintenance crews that come out and actually service the lakes, uh, whether or not they're gonna wanna get down into that water and do the exact same thing. There are some tight choke points in there due to, you know, native trees as well around the existing, uh, pond bank, as we've done it already. Um, there's two fences side by side, and I'm pretty sure everybody's aware of what those two fences are at this point. Um, and one seven foot into the LME, and the other one's six foot, so really, this is a, a multifaceted item here. Uh, my concern would be the maintenance, the long-term effects of bringing these to a factory setting and making sure that we're able to maintain them after we've spent all this money, uh, to invest into these lake banks.
If you recall, a couple meetings ago, this was one of the issues that we brought in front of the board, and the board set the policy, and we followed up with it.
Okay. But I guess that's, that'll be my stance on it, like, keep it as it is, whatever.
One more small comment, if we don't know if it's an interfere, can I keep it, and if one person says, "You know what, it's in the way," I immediately take it down? Because right now, it's just, we don't know if it's gonna...
I, I would prefer that he fills up and completes it and brings to the board, and with sketches and everything else, so we can make a...
Yeah.
The only issue with that is the contractor is under contract to remove the fencing, and that's just gonna delay him...
I'll remove the fence on my own dime, if you tell me I need to move it.
You set the policy.
What's the dis...
What's the distance between the control elevation and the fence?
I have all the survey with the fence in here.
Cause we're, we're, we're basically at control elevation right now. So what's the distance between? The control elevation in the fence and then what is the length of the interference?
So it's six feet into the LME and.
Say it again.
It's six feet into the LME.
No, that's not my question. My question is right now from the water level.
I don't think he's going to know what the control elevation is.
It's twenty-five to forty.
Right now, the water level is basically at control. So what is the distance from the water level to your fence?
I can go measure it and email the board.
I mean, not ballpark. Ballpark.
Thirty feet maybe, twenty-five feet, is it less than that?
Okay, that, that's issue one. So it's six to eight feet. Ballpark. What's the length of the interference? How long's the fence? Ten feet, twenty feet, thirty feet? What are we talking?
Twenty-five roughly, I had.
What is your address? I was going to ask you the same thing.
Uh, fifty, uh, fifty feet across.
So it's, the fence is within that distance for about fifty feet.
Uh, yes, sir.
Okay, okay. Then the last, last, last question is.
I remember now.
I'm sorry.
It is a tight spot. I visited and they had some coconut, is the coconut trees on your property on the next door?
Uh, I don't have coconut trees.
One more down. Okay, so I know the location. It, it is.
If I'm in your backyard looking at the coconut trees, are you to the right?
I'm not looking to the, I'm just.
You're to the right.
That's thirty feet from LME to the.
No, this is much shorter. That's why you have that much space, but it's a very, it's very short.
Then, then the last thing is, is that when the project started, did you receive any notification that there was this conflict?
I received a notification that it was, uh, that it was within the easement and I didn't have easement permission.
I'm sorry?
Yes, I received notification that it was not, uh, I did not have easement permission and it was within the easement.
And, and that you were instructed to remove it?
Uh, I was instructed that if it interferes with, I'll read this word for word. After conducting onsite visit with a contractor. It's been determined that efforts will be made to be, to navigate around the fence if it's not removed prior. Um. And then I talked to the contractor, said, no, I can navigate around this. And I said, all right, let me know if you can't and I'll call railway fence and they'll come move it.
And, and that letter that, that correspondence you received is from who?
But the contract that he's talking about is not maintenance. It's.
I still need to, I still need to apply for LME.
That's the conversation that I had with, you know, h- him engaging with the vendors because yes, it may not affect construction, but we have a maintenance issue that comes after.
I understand that. What I'm trying to get bound to is, is that did we give him knowledge and, and, and any otherbody, anybody else in? Daniel's Preserve or any of the other communities, prior knowledge before the construction started, that we had an issue that something needed to be moved or something needed to be changed? That was my question.
I received notification that my fence was in the easement. I responded to Randy with all my HOA approvals and he said, you don't have C D D approval. For LME agreement, uh, and then Daniel said, hey, well, we'll try to work around it. And now I understand, no matter what happens, I need to get LME approval. I just want to know, is that going to be approved? Am I wasting my time doing that? Cause if you're going to turn it down, I don't want to spend hours of paperwork and bother them. If the board's just going to say, no, we don't, we don't want fences in the easement, no matter what.
I think that that particular location is going to be difficult to do maintenance because I was at that location. I've been there, yeah. Those, both, not just his, but the one next door. It's, and that's why I remembered the coconut tree, because I was like, they would kind of have to go around.
I would agree with what, what, what you saw, because you, you understand the situation.
I was onsite with Daniel and, and I, we walked on and actually I questioned that too. So it was before even knowing there was an issue. It already raised concern to me, those particular two.
I just want to make sure that we have consistency in our rulings, uh, just arbitrarily making one decision and then another, another location.
Can I have a few weeks then to call my contractor and have him move it professionally? Do you take out yourself? And they say, well, now I have to redo the whole fence. It's going to cost me like seven grand.
With this point in time, construction is.
I'll work with Daniel on that. Okay, thank you.
Sixty ninety, they should be.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
I actually have one more that came in, um, regarding an agenda item fifteen A and that's Vince LaFredo. And then Rod will get to you.
Waiting for you, Vince.
Yes, you know, I was going to speak. Waited the last minute. Vince LaFredo, ninety-eight, seventy-one, Blue Stone. I've listened to a number of residents of Pelican. It does surprise me to all be here and I, I would defend my community the same way. Um, the issue has been, and I brought this up at the Parks and Rec, um, Town Hall. The millions of dollars that the folks that are going to be paying into the general fund going into the future towards this park. Is a consideration that is not going to be equitable, even though Pelican folks don't have access to it. The bottom line is forty percent of this board, board is going to be voting on it. And again, it's not to disparage the people on this board, but my, my interest as a resident and a treasurer at Stony Brook, I'm looking now for our residents. We have amenities. We have a pool, which we're going to go and resurface, which is going to cost us in a tune of a hundred thousand dollars. This is what the folks bought into down there. They got the security gate, they bought the amenities. C D D, when I look through the statutes and they've been voiced here today, is the fact is, it's supposed to be for infrastructure. And this explanation's going far afield here. I think the commitment on spending with Parks and Rec is a bad decision going into the future. It's a commitment by the community. I understand all of the logic on it, but when I'm telling residents in Stony Brook. That Pelican's going to be voting on this with forty percent of the vote and are contributing towards that, that's a bothersome thing. Now, the administrative billing, that's been clarified in previous months, that fourteen percent was going to come out of Pelican. So in that respect, they're contributing towards the building. The park is a whole nother issue. And I've made myself known in the past, I want to speak for Stony Brook. I can't say I speak for everybody, but I do speak for myself as a resident. These are the type of things on living here. I've been here ten years. Decision I'm going to have to make over the next ten, the, the next couple of years. It's just my wife and I, retired couple, and what's going to happen is these assessments are just going to go through a roof. The increases for Stony Brook alone with our O F O font has gone up significantly in the last six years. So, and that's going to be going away hopefully. And then once that's put to bed, then we got to look at what's going to happen with the general fund. And I thank you for listening to me.
Uh, we got Rod Senior yet. Reminder, you get three minutes. Can you unmute yourself, Rod, or do I need, I must need to unmute you?
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, are you sure you can hear me? Okay, I'm, I'm dialing in from Cape Breton in Atlantic Canada.
We can hear you.
Thank you. Park survey, question nine. The key metric was that fifty-one percent of the respondents are opposed to the park. Based on the eighty-eight dollars annual assessment. My takeaway from the town hall meeting. Is that you're looking for a sense of direction? Well, fifty-one percent, in my opinion, provides a clear consensus that the community yet again. Is saying no to a proposed park. Furthermore, the C D D has withheld vital information from. The residents about its future plans and future phases that are envisioned for this park. Which will drive the cost from three million to seven million. And the annual from eighty-eight dollars to three hundred dollars when you consider O N M and security. If a bid comes in from a contractor that is incomplete or lacks transparency like this, it's thrown out. For the same reason, I think that this park survey should be considered invalid and also thrown out. Instead, I asked the board to focus its attention on the extravagant cost of the administration building. And not to exacerbate matters by sliding a park in with it. On interconnectivity, I endorse the repeal of chapter six of two thousand and five. That provides continuing exemption to Pelican Preserve. I have carefully read the minutes from two thousand and three up to two thousand and five that led up to this rule. All kinds of arguments were made, for example, fifty-five plus, yeah. Well, so Gateway Greens has an average age of sixty. I'm seventy-five years old, so fifty-five plus doesn't wash with me. Also, Pelican has its own amenities at Town Square. Well, so does Gateway Golf Club and so does Stony Brook, as you've heard. We don't want to pay twice either. Also, I heard that Pelican Pres- were Pelican Preserve were exempt. Because they're exempt from school impact fees. I can't see the relevance of that. In the end, two thousand and five exemption, chapter six settled on the idea. That the lack of connectivity to Gateway Boulevard gave them the exemption. Well, um, I look at the residents of, of my colleagues from Pelican Reserve. I know many of them. They use the church, our restaurants. They use our tavern. Several of them use the pool for ladies aerobics and they have no problem using Gateway Boulevard. So it's changed a lot since twenty years ago. In addition to that, Arborwood and Worthington are not connected to Gateway Boulevard either, but they're not exempt. Finally, I would say that the C D D has always been dysfunctional with Pelican Preserve. Having forty percent of the vote, even though they're exempt from projects they're voting on. I think we'll be a more united board if we're all focused on the same capital and O N M costs. And there is no Florida statue that. You're either in or you're out. Pelican, Pelican Preserve is part of Gateway C D D, period.
Thank you. We're all set. That is the last one. All right. Okay, so I didn't, uh, local achievements and recognition. So I guess we have Lee County Sheriff's Office.
Wants to come on up. Yep, sorry. Should have told you three thirty.
I have three minutes.
You get all the minutes.
Um, I just wanted to introduce myself. My name is Mark Fenora. I'm a captain of Lee County Sheriff's Office over the fifth precinct. Um, if you did not know, Gateway falls within the fifth precinct, so. Um, basically my area responsibility includes Gateway. I'm also a resident of Gateway. I live in Gateway Greens. Um, Chelsea and I worked together for a while, uh, when I was a lieutenant over in the third precinct, which includes Fort Myers Beach. And she was working for the town of Fort Myers Beach. So, um, we remain in constant communication about things that happen in Gateway. So. When she mentioned some comments on some items, including like speed and, and whatnot, I, I just. Uh, put myself out there and said, let me come to the board meeting and introduce myself. Um. We have thirty-six patrol deputies in fifth precinct. We have seven patrol sergeants. We have five precinct deputies. Or detectives, uh, for the precinct. Um. Typically, we have one deputy that is assigned to, um, the, um, sector three, which is Gateway. And, uh, I have him come out here in the mornings. Some of their responsibilities is to come out and do school checks of all the schools we have out here. The deputies will come out and they'll meet with the school resource officers, uh, each morning they'll sign in and they'll augment the, um. Deputies that are in the schools, um, come out and do some traffic, uh, enforcement. Um. My personal opinion, traffic is better right now that the schools are out. Um. There's a big difference. As you see, I come out Gateway Greens and I see the big difference. Um, so. This August, when school starts back up, I'll try and get two deputies out here instead of the one. And we also have our traffic unit that'll come out here and help us out with some of the things. Um, specifically in the mornings, I know at the beginning of the school year, it's a big issue with all the traffic. I think we have the same. Uh, issues, the beginning of every school year, the parents come in. Most of the parents that are for, that have been. Their kids have been coming to the school for a while. They're familiar with the, the backups, but you always have a, a group of parents that are new to the area. And, um, they're not familiar with the traffic patterns. Um, so we have deputies, we'll, we'll have more deputies out here in the beginning of the school. Try and assist with that. We typically get dozens of complaints about the school. Uh, it's mostly at the drop off. I think. The egress is a little bit better, but, uh, we do have complaints on that. So we're going to work on that as well. We had a meeting, uh, beginning of last year with some of the heads of the schools out here in Gateway, trying to figure out better traffic patterns. I know that Gateway Elementary, um, went above and beyond and, uh, met with D O T and their, their, uh. People and they're constructing a new, uh, pickup drop off area. I think that's going to alleviate a lot of the issues on Griffin. Um, I do work with the, uh, resource officers at the Gateway High Schools. We talk to them normally, uh, about the, uh, the traffic patterns and things that go on there. We did have a traffic detail for a while coming out in the afternoon. Trying to educate the parents as to where they could park and back up on, uh, Griffin Boulevard. Uh, I, I felt it did work. I did come out here a couple of times myself. Um, but as most of you will see, there's just more cars that that area can support. So some things we just can't control. Um, and then the other area of issue, uh, is. Um, Gateway Charter Elementary, uh, how the cars back up on, on Daniel's Parkway. But our traffic unit does come out and help us with that as well. So, um. That's what I have to say about the, uh, the schools. Um. Aside from traffic, um, we have a very low crime rate out here. Um.
We're all knocking on wood.
Me too, me too. Uh, we have a very low crime rate out here. Um, I think one of the biggest issues that we have out here are vehicle burgl. And that's one thing I wanted to bring up to all of you. You can pass it along to your neighbors, whatnot. The majority of the vehicle burglaries that we have out here. See if their vehicles unlocked. So I think this year we had one vehicle up here off Griffin that was. Broken into where they smashed the window, but that's unusual. Typically, we'll see, um, the suspects come through, they'll walk through the neighborhoods. I'm going to say midnight to five o'clock in the morning and, um, just basically pull on door handles and really the ones they go into are the cars that are unlocked. So what I would suggest or ask of you is lock your doors at night. It is a safe community. But that just enhances that. Lock your cars at night. The other thing, don't leave valuables in the car. I, I, I can't tell you how many people leave. Tens or hundreds or thousands of dollars in their cars. And the other big thing that's left in their cars a lot of times, which I, I, I can't understand, firearms. There's so many firearms taken from vehicles. Unlocked vehicles, they'll leave a firearm in the center console and so we see that quite often. Not specifically in here, but countywide on our vehicle burglary. So that's why the sheriff usually gets on and says, lock it or lose it. Please lock your doors. Um, and that will, that will help us out a lot. Gateway, um, if you don't know, we are equipped with, um, what are called L P Rs, license plate readers. Uh, so. The majority, I would say. We have seventeen L P Rs in these communities, every entrance, egress. Um. So basically any car that comes in or out, we have the ability to catch, capture license plate on that vehicle. So that helps us tremendously. The burglaries, um, were the one smashed window. We were able to get leads on that burglary and found out that they were people, individuals coming in. From the Tampa area. They came down, uh, from the Tampa area and, uh. And at the burglaries here, they weren't even from county. So, uh, we're still working on that investigation. Yeah, other crime that I wanted to mention that's still active is our seven eleven robbery. That happened at a strange time. The afternoon was like eleven o'clock in the morning, actually. Uh, that still is an active investigation. I know that.
All right, just one, one last thing. Um, the district does partner with the sheriff's office and do kind of quarterly trainings. Uh, we host them here in this room. Uh, we work with that unit or group that helps put it on, so please be. In tune with that, with your HOAs and, and. Yep, they do participate in pretty much all of our community events, the red, white pool. I believe that they have ice. Ice cream truck there. So we have a very good partnership with the sheriff's office.
I know Ed has some feedback and I have some as well. I'm going to go first. I'll go after you.
Yeah, Mark. Uh, these e-bikes, e-scooters and dirt bikes have really become a problem. Uh, we're trying to control it in Gateway Greens. Uh, people are asking this morning at the meeting, why is Lee County Sheriff's Office? Doing nothing. We got kids that go to the school in the morning and they zip up the cart path. And I understand about a month, month and a half ago, there was a serious accident down around the, uh, uh, Gateway Boulevard Deli. A lady was hit by an e-bike. Uh. What, what's the county's position on e-bikes? As I read the statute, sixteen years old, first of all. And I know numerous kids that are riding bikes that are twelve, thirteen years old, going to school. Uh, how their parents do it is beyond me, but I guess that's the world we live in. The issue is, is that, uh, as I read the statute, those bikes are not loud on sidewalks. They're supposed to be on streets. Uh, how? What, what, what's the county's position? Cause I'm getting hit. Why am I being anal in my community? And the county allows them to zip up and down the, the. And the county allows them to zip up and down the, the sidewalks?
Well, so a lot of times, um, things like e-bikes, electric scooters, electric skateboards. The technology comes about quickly and it takes a long time for the, um, statutes to catch up to enforce the, it's got, there's typically complaints, issues, accidents, crashes, and they, they get brought to the forefront and then, uh, it goes up to the legislature and they have to rewrite the statutes or write new statutes to enforce that. E-bikes are, are, are not new new, but they're pretty new. That's not, so, and a lot of them are hybrid. So you can either pedal or you can use the electric motor on them. Um, there's several different, uh, levels of them and it's not really easy to determine what level or speed they can go at. So when I typically I see them, yeah, you can see them going pretty fast, but I can't enforce that if it's, if it's also under human power. So they'll use the electric portion of it and then they'll start the pet, and they can be on the sidewalks. So I think the statutes are really gonna have to catch up to those e-bikes. For now, they can be on the sidewalk and they can be on the roadway. Um, you have to treat them just like a regular bike. Now, if you think about it, a regular bike, if someone's riding it fast, could probably go pretty close to what those e-bike speeds are and they're allowed on the sidewalk as well. So until the statutes catch up and we have a concrete, uh, enforcement mode, then we really can't do anything with them.
Does the statute require age?
No, they're bikes.
No, 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 no. I just read that today. That's sixteen years of age.
And I think it's, it's, it is considered a motor vehicle. It is main human power, but also-
It is not considered.
So it's not?
No, it's electric. It's not, it doesn't have a motor.
Yeah, I, I was, yeah, the understanding and according to our attorney this morning, it's sixteen years of age.
No. That's my understanding is no. They can, they can ride them. So until the statutes look at them and new statutes come out that allow us to enforce it, we can enforce it. So.
Well, I know we have LCSO in our community and the deputy that's been assigned to our community has made it clear that unless and until we have a policy, LCSO is not gonna do anything.
That's correct.
Okay.
And now we have the additional HOA, uh, items that have come up as far as the vehicles and the enforcement of the vehicles. So now the HOA, the new HOA laws are saying, if they're legal on the street, you can't prevent them from being within the community. So that's just as of July first.
One question, other than the cameras at our entrance, it's an extra, you know-
The LPRs, license plate readers.
Is there any other activity by, uh, Lee County within Pelican?
As far as-
Do you come there? Do you monitor?
Pelican Preserve is in the city.
Yeah.
That's Fort Myers.
Okay, so you don't?
I mean, we do cover it as well. We could, yes.
For assistance, but not routine.
Prime, correct. Not routinely. Primarily it's Fort Myers. Yes, sir.
Anything else for the captain?
I just, I just want to recap. So then, like, I just want to make sure that it's, it's loud and clear. It's cool coming around the corner. Safety enforcement partnership with all of us. I know I was a big driver last year regarding the parking on Griffin and all that. And, and I will tell you, it's probably one of the biggest reason why the school board went ahead and worked with getting that. But that takes partnership from you guys. So it, it takes, you know, we fought really hard to get those signs up there because Lee County Sheriff's Office says you guys cannot, we can enforce it if you don't have the signs. We gave you the signs. So then we had issues with you guys enforcing. Like my biggest concern on the high school roundabout. It is drop off and it's pickup. The kids walking, it's not necessarily the damage to the, that we were having. It is the kids crossing the road, crossing the sidewalks and parents just stopping in the middle of the road to pick up those kids. It is scary. It is dangerous.
I agree.
So I want to make sure that when we start a school year, like we, because we know it's gonna be a problem. We, day one, we start tackling. And you know, you have two resource officers over there. We have good communication. We need to continue. And if it doesn't work out, then hopefully by another year or so, the school board will come and, and will address it, either, you know, re-engineer the parking lot or take a look at, you know, the back or other entrances. But we, we really want to work with the partnership with Lee County to do those enforcement, to look at safety for the kids and for the drivers.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. And so there's two school resource officers at each high school and there's one school um, and their primary responsibility is inside the school, uh, unless something criminal happens, uh, outside, you know, right outside campus. Um, and I work, we all work very well with them. Um, but yeah, we're gonna get an early start on that. I think there's, um, some other, so I've parked out there by the high school and it can be, oh, one, one person, it could be overwhelming the amount of parents that park out there.
I agree a hundred percent.
And by the time we get to, maybe I get to two people, but by that time, all the kids have run out, jumped in the cars and, and taken off.
And Chelsea and I did talked about that because I, I mean, the, the times that I observed, like he will go to the, to, to the, to one side of the roundabout and they were all parking the other side. So, and we talked about it, but then we, I will be honest with you. We saw a lack of enforcement because we were getting those reports and we were paying an additional detail. And, you know, verbal warnings. I mean, I don't dictate how you do your job, but it did not make me happy when I'm paying it twice.
I heard.
And it wasn't doing it. So I just want to make sure like this year, we're on it, you know? Thank you.
No, I, no, I agree. And, and the thing with that, that detail, there was, there were deputies that, um, so for extra, um, duty details, we'll have deputies that come and sign up from other precincts that might not be intimately familiar with the situation there. So they come out here and they go, okay, this is a parking enforcement detail. They'll come out and I can tell you that the first, maybe the first two or three days that the deputies that came out, if they, yeah, for sure. And they call me and they say, wow, I think we need two people out here. So I would go out there and assist them and, and basically move people along. And we, we wrote several tickets when I was out there to some people. Um, I think one big thing that would help at the uh, Gateway High School would be some sort of physical, the high school up here on Griffin. Uh, would be some sort of physical barrier along the side of Griffin, preventing people from parking in that area. So if you're going north towards eighty-two, you have no parking signs, like bolt or something, something-
We talked with the county about that and they said no.
They said, okay.
Well, yeah, so it's not, it's not for lack of trying.
Nails.
You want to drop them off there? Just say they disappeared. I have a problem with that. But thank you.
So, but we, we will take, uh, we will get with the, uh, the principals once again. And I know they, they worked very hard putting out, uh, mailers and emails and flyers to the parents and letting them, but, and I can tell every time that I stop someone, they'll be parked right in front of a no parking sign and say, I didn't know. And I said, okay.
Their pocket, they'll stop.
And it's, it's, I mean, you know, it's just, it's the ease of, rather than them waiting in the line, what it is, is the ease of them pulling off onto the grass, the keep the child being right there. They hop in the car and they go back home. That's what I found most every time. So I'll get with the principals. We'll get with the school resource officers. And, uh, I have a couple of my deputies out here the first week, two weeks of the school, uh, year, and we will work on that. And I think if we can nip it in the bud early, then it can set a, a pattern for the rest of the year. And I, I think the-
Yeah.
We can hope.
I hope, hope. And I think this, this, uh, construction here will-
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
All righty.
Thanks, Mark.
I know.
Move to approve agenda item seven A.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And, uh, Nancy Smith is here in the audience. She's in the back row. She can just wave.
Hi Nancy, welcome.
Thank you.
I told you it'd be easy.
That was real easy.
Agenda item eight A, the minutes of June sixth.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Consent agenda items.
Move to approve all, uh, consent agenda items nine, A, B, C, D, E, and F.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
District engineer.
Steven, are you on?
Uh, I think we were going to put, uh, agenda item fifteen.
Okay.
I am here by the way, but I'll-
Okay, Steve, uh, would you just hold on for us? All right, so you want to- Fifteen A, you want to present it then?
Yeah, I, I think it's, uh, pretty well, well-known what's going on here in the community. I sent out the, uh, need, value, re-evaluation of the need and the justification for chapter six of the rules of Gateway. I think bottom line is, is that what happened twenty years ago is not what the conditions are in Gateway right now. We're one district. We know that by the very rules that you were all talking about, that the Florida statutes are very clear that if there is a, uh, a, a use or a benefited use, then everybody pays. It's not, does ten percent of the people have a benefited use? Twenty percent of the people, ninety percent of the people. It just says if there's a benefited use. I think it's quite clear that there are people in Pelican that use our churches. There's people in Pelican that drive over here to our restaurants. There's people in Pelican that, uh, work here in Gateway. Uh, times have changed. It's time for this rule to be eliminated and repealed. Uh, I, I don't know what else to say. Uh, my deal is, is that I'm prepared after a little bit of discussion here to make a motion to initiate the process to repeal chapter six.
Being the person here with the least longevity on the board. First of all, I would like to thank whoever was taking the minutes um, of the board meetings in oh-three, oh-four and oh-five, because I read them all. And it's amazing. Uh, I, I could almost see the storyline. I could almost see who was stalking what and whatever. They were very, very, very complete. Uh, not like we have today, but, um, I, I got a good picture of what the discussion was at the time and where they thought things were going. And I think it was also indicative of the fact that they took two years to basically, from the time it was first brought forward to the time, uh, something was passed and two different boards, by the way. Uh, the board members that originally started, only one of them was on there when the second board actually voted on it. So, uh, reading through the minutes was really, really helpful in giving me the whole picture of what the board action was and who, who's, who was saying what and where. Um, Ed, refresh my memory, what, or maybe Tony, what is the process that you're, you are suggesting that we start a process to, to what? Repeal.
Yeah.
You want the whole thing repealed completely?
The, the, the issue is, is that, and to go back to not to be demeaning or anything, but to cor- correct your deal, thirteen months is exactly the amount of time it took them to decide that. And, uh, I believe it was three boards instead of two boards.
Oh, was it?
But the issue is, it, it went a long way. But the one thing that we all received as board members is we received copies of documents that Tony, uh, graciously sent to us. However, the one that he left out, it was probably the one that was the most critical. And that was the one dated January twelfth that started this entire fiasco.
January twelfth, what year?
Two thousand and four. That is probably the most important and laid the groundwork for this whole fiasco. This deal started in the minutes, I'm not going to sit here on-
Four?
Yeah, January twelfth, two thousand and four.
Four, okay.
In that meeting, what started was is that a representative, and I believe I called it out in my, uh, short, brief, uh, justification, uh, WCI representative David Caldwell, heading to that meeting. And in the, it basically indicated that, hey, uh, we're, we're bringing to you, uh, uh, Sun City, which is now known as Pelican Preserve. And the inference in that meeting was is what are you going to do for us? What are you going to do for us? And the issue was, is that we want to have some exemptions. And this all started with the board president, the, uh, 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 deputy, uh, manager at that time, a guy named Tony, and you, you were there. DeCoke, DeCoke?
James DeCoke.
DeCoke. And James DeCoke was quite vocal. And if you read all the stuff that Tony said, you'll see his name many, 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 many times. And, uh, Pete Dora, uh, board chair at the time. And the issue is, is that what, what this all started out was, is we got a problem and they did have a problem. And it was a budgetary problem. How do we take and delineate cost for Gateway and cost for them? And then the issue kind of blossomed into this. We don't want to pay for that that we don't use. And it went around and around and around. And in that meeting, they authorized Tony to essentially then put through Tony under the bus. I don't know if you still got the tire tracks on you, but they threw Tony under the bus to create a rule or create a methodology that solved their budgetary problem. And their budgetary problem was, they were basically making up budgets and not having a basis to say, why you paid for X and you paid for Y. They had to, they had to resolve that issue. And it was quite apparent that they didn't want to take and have it across the board. So they had Tony, uh, uh, start that process. And then you've read all the rest of it. It goes all the way up to February fourteenth to two thousand and five, when the rule was approved. My issue is, the, the issue of, uh, uh, fifty-five and over have nothing to do with nothing, nothing. The whole deal about school impact fees has nothing to do with nothing. It doesn't, it's not pertinent to this issue. So they tried to come up with another deal. The other deal was, is that, well, what we have is we have this, uh, a connectivity problem. No place else in this state has that issue. No place in this state, in counties or anything, has that issue. If you're willing to talk connectivity, how, how would you like to be the guy that's living out there at Captiva and arguing and having, I, I would argue like hell, but why am I paying for stuff over in Babcock Ranch? Makes no sense. That, that's, that's just ridiculous. We are one gateway and we should be paying for everything. I'm willing to forget what's happened the last twenty years. I think it was a absolute major mistake. They got screwed over by the developer, WCI. They got sold a bill of goods and they swallowed the hook. It's that simple. That's the way I see it. The issue is that's water over the dam. We need to take in that. Again, Pelican Preserve people are using our stuff here. I don't care whether it's one person, ten people, a hundred people or two hundred people. The issue is they all have by definition benefited use. And again, the statute doesn't say anything about partial benefited use or full benefited use. It says benefited use. This year, we were talking about a budget of one million dollars, one million dollars of items for which twenty-five hundred, back, correct that, twenty-four ninety-eight. You caught it. Twenty-four ninety-eight are exempt. In my opinion, that is absolutely not fair, nor is that equitable. We have people here in this community, not the least of which, and God only knows, I am not a defender of Stony Brook, but I understand their cause. That's, that's, that's ridiculous. They have all those assets. Why would they want it? You've got, uh, Silver Lakes and Gateway Greens, both of which have over fifty percent that are retired senior citizens. They don't use that. Why should they pay it? We're gonna get down to that. We're not gonna have a need for it. This whole thing is ridiculous. It's time for this rule to come to an end. And the reason I say we create the process is because I believe if you read chapter one twenty of the statutes which we fall under, there is a process, and thanks to Tony, he, uh, educated me on this, that you have to go through. It's not like a board twenty years ago, ten years ago, two years ago, passed a rule and we're just going to change it. It's not that simple. If we're going to repeal it, there is a process. If we're going to amend it, there is a process. My deal is, I see absolutely no reason, no reason to do an amendment to this rule. It simply needs to be repealed. And so that's what my, uh, uh, position is, is that we need to start the process to repeal the rule.
And I appreciate your thoughts, Ed. I think you probably know that I vehemently disagree with you, but what the question I asked was, what is the process you're suggesting?
Well, it, it's a process that chapter one twenty calls for.
Timeline?
Tony, Tony. Tony's, Tony's gonna have to jump in, but ba- bottom line is, and correct me where I'm wrong, Tony. If you're going to repeal a rule, there are steps you have to go through, essentially like probably the manager or, uh, uh, assessment methodology guru, which is Russ, or, uh, uh, accounting person, which is, uh, Stephen Bloom, certainly Tony, and, uh, I would recommend that one board member. A board member be on that committee or that group that starts the process of reviewing. I think there are pros and cons and things like that that have to be discussed before you just arbitrarily repeal a rule. It gets a little more complicated, as I understand it, that if you were going to amend the rule, because there's some other paperwork that has to be done, other studies. other studies, other reports. I'm not interested in that. I think the issue is that the time has come that the operation of maintenance costs and the capital costs associated with this rule are absolutely ridiculous. The time has come, eliminate it. So my thing would be to repeal it, not amend it.
Okay, then Madam Chair, if you don't mind, Tony, what is the process according to the state?
Chapter 120, the repeal process is direct staff to engage the necessary consultants to form an analysis. You have to provide a statement of estimated regulatory costs is one thing. And then you have to hold public hearings and possibly even hold public workshops with regards to the rule development, which would be repeal of the rule. And you have to, for purpose of rule development, if requested writing by any affected person, generally have to hold a public hearing. Then there's a notice of the public hearing. And in the notice, it says if anybody else has their estimated regulatory cost, they can provide that. So the timeline is probably about 60 days, assuming forsaken discussion that we can get revised assessment methodology prepared during that timeframe, because you also have to have the hearing with regards to adopting a revised assessment methodology. If you recall, the board back in 2020 went to the process to revise the O and M assessment methodology. And that happened over a period of over months because we had.
Keep in mind, Tony, that's partially true. Dr. Russ, our assessment methodology guide, Dr. Steve. No change is needed whatsoever in the Gateway side of the assessment.
But it is the Pelican Reserve side, so.
The Pelican Reserve side.
That changes the assessment methodology.
The Pelican Reserve side, because the Pelican Reserve assessment methodology and ours are a little bit different because you've elected, for example, we have roads. Our assessment methodology over here is divided into four components. We have the admin. We have the roads. We have the parks in the rec and we have stormwater management. You all over there have admin and you have stormwater management. So there would have to be a way to if this if this cost, this cost was distributed and we're talking, just use the numbers and round off, we're talking about a million bucks, okay? Million bucks is subject to discussion here. Right now, 5,200 people ballpark are paying for that million dollars. If Pelican Reserve comes in, the ratio has been almost for the last 10 years, one third, two thirds. You guys are one third, we're two thirds. Ballpark, ballpark, okay? So that million dollars, if that was the case, then one third of that million dollars, like $333,000, would go to you all for distribution. The problem is is that your assessment methodology system is not set up to take that distribution. So what would have to be done, the road component of it, as I understand, right now exists and you pay a road component in your admin side. What the problem would be is that you don't have a park component. So the component of the park that's in that 300,000 that would be your distribution, there's really no way to distribute that money to the residents over in Pelican Reserve and C5. That's as I understand it is pretty simply what's going to be done.
Okay.
As I got from the.
Can we get the process down first, please?
Okay, well, that's part of the process is recreating and a assessment methodology for you all. If this rule is repealed, there has to be a system of how that money is distributed. And that's part of the problem.
So since we are taking, we have a public hearing middle of August, I don't remember the date, to adopt our budget for this year. You are not talking about affecting the budget for 2025. You are looking into the future, correct?
Yes and no. I am of the opinion.
I feel like I know his answer.
I'm of the, I am of the opinion, talking to our consultants, that yes, it can be done. But there is a problem, a glitch. The glitch is is that right now we have created a high, as we all know, we've created a high water mark. A high water mark does not impact Gateway, oh, one. Because what we're talking about is we're taking $333,000 out of our budget, so the number's going to go down. We don't have an issue. At Pelican Reserve, we're adding $333,000 in after the budget and that creates a problem. I would.
Are you then, is Gateway then going to take two thirds of the O2 budget, which is the Pelican Preserve budget and put that on your side of the thing?
No, no, I think what I think, I think where we're at, I think where we're at right now.
One third when it benefits you.
Right now, right now.
What's good for the goose is not good for the gander, right?
Hold on here. Hold on right now. What's been good for the goose has not been good for the gander for 20 years. So I'm not, I'm not even going to go down the goose and gander road. The issue is, I believe we have a timeline issue. I believe we have a timeline issue. In order to implement this and get it done, even in my wildest imagination, is 60 days. Necessitates that we be able to get the county to agree that we.
You have to do it in 30 days, Ed.
I'm sorry?
A month from now, we have to vote on the budget.
No, 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 you've been misinformed. We don't have to.
I'm sorry, Ed. We just got a public hearing.
He's asking to do it within the budget timeline.
That's what I'm saying.
It cannot be done. It cannot be done.
Yeah, it's to be extended.
Thank you.
So it's not this year.
The issue is we could go to the end of September with the county. I think going down that road would be just like trying to, what do you do, peeing up a rope? It ain't going to happen.
Okay.
It ain't going to happen. So my deal is is let's start the process and understand, this gets complicated.
And then there's going to be a process.
Complicated. Let's start the process of the repeal.
I would like to ask, Tony, was there a study done originally?
I don't believe there was.
There was not.
There was not. So the process was not.
We even had, this is how bad.
Was not implemented at the time.
No, at the time, if you look at the amendment, it says no statement, a statement of estimated regulatory cost was prepared. And it's attached to it and indicates, and that's one of the items that needs to be taken into account. And again, I haven't compared the statute 20 years ago to the statute today as to what the prerequisites are, whether they were modified or revised. But what has to happen is, first of all, prior to the repeal, district agency, where the agency under the statute gives notice of its intended action, setting forth a short, plain explanation of the purpose and effect of the proposed action, the full text of the proposed rule or amendment and a summary thereof, and a reference to the grant of rulemaking. And then that gets advertised and has to have at least 28 days before the intended action. And then you also notify people whether or not we prepared an estimated statement of estimated regulatory cost. And if not, that they have 21 days to provide a statement of estimated regulatory cost and then have a hearing with regards to that. So in order to be really begin the ball, if the board's going to give direction to staff, the direction would be to come back with the proposed notice, because I'm not going to just put a notice on Chelsea's not based upon a conversation here. I think the board would need to see what is the intended action in writing and authorize that to take place. With regards to the budget, the statute, there's no ability to extend the timeframe when the assessment rules have to be the property praiser. It's black and white. It's a charter county. We technically have until September 25th. Property appraisers hate that. They want it by September 1st because.
But they like them what they're going to get. That's two different.
But the problem is September 25th is cutting it off the course. If you're a non-charter county, it's September 15th. And you, and once you levy the assessments, the only way to amend them is to go through a whole assessment hearing process. But the issue is the assessment rules will be on the tax bill already by virtue of what's delivered to the property praiser. So that's why I said.
Okay, then.
That's why I said 60 days.
This whole thing.
Ed, I would like to suggest to you that then our first meeting in August, which is the one just before our budget, we have a workshop. And but that workshop be for the budget, because that's the important thing that we have to pass in August.
It's actually separated.
And then the first meeting in September, that there be a workshop of the board.
On this topic?
On this topic.
No, no.
Who decided that?
This has been kicked down the road. Here's what I am willing to consent to, willing to consent to.
It's five board members, Ed.
I'm willing to. I understand that. I understand that.
Just hearing only one.
But I just want to point out what's going on. I'm willing to extend this, realizing that trying to ramrod this thing through in a short period of time is ridiculous. It's not going to happen because it's not going to benefit the 2025 budget. But I, on the other hand, I saw what happened in 2004 when it was ramrod through and it was a public hearing and not one swinging single, you know what, showed up at the public hearing. This rule got passed by this community, by a board and a manager and an attorney with basically zero, zero.
And I can absolutely guarantee it's going to be a very big popular debate.
Okay.
I think this next time they'll be.
My issue is just a little bit different. I have absolutely, and again, I'll go for the discussion, but my motion is going to be, I want to start and have the vote to start the process today. I don't want to wait another meeting.
Are you making a motion?
But, but.
No, I want to continue to make sure everybody on the board asks any questions they have. I think I've spelled out everything of where it's at. I think the residents of Gateway, oh, one, have spelled out enough is enough. You people vote, I understand, and I understand what the rules are. You vote on something that we pay for and you don't have any skin in the game. That is not right. It's not right.
And Ed, you vote on things in Pelican, which you have no skin in the game.
Name one thing I voted on Pelican that is controversial.
The architecture that they want to fit in.
The architect.
Whatever the gentleman said, the artwork.
The artwork.
I couldn't care less about the artwork.
You voted on it. There's an item that.
You're allowed to vote on it, just like anybody else.
If you want to take that.
Wait a second.
Wait a minute.
Hold on one second, Ed. You talk a lot. Be quiet a minute. You voted, the three Gateway people voted to put artwork in Pelican that the Pelican people didn't want. And now you're telling foul because you're saying when it's the other way around, you don't like it.
How much that, how much that artwork costs?
That is not.
How much did that artwork cost you?
It is not the principle.
How much?
Now, how much are we really talking about? How much, how much are we really talking about in terms of the change of the 14%? The 14% to go to 40 or whatever it is, 36, is not a significant dollar value.
14 to 36, what are you talking about?
Yes.
Yeah, you're right now.
The part that's included in your connectivity is not a significant amount of dollars.
I don't know what you're looking at, Bob.
I'm looking at the budget.
School. It's a million dollars.
No, it's not.
A million dollars of that budget, 2025.
We're not talking about the budget. We're talking about that portion that's affected by interconnectivity.
No, that's what I'm talking about. There is a million dollars of this budget, 2025, million dollars in the combination of roads and parks that we pay for in oh, one, that you do not get distributed to.
Okay, and we spend a million dollars in roads.
That is your community over there.
Wait a minute, we're all one.
No, wait a minute. If you're going to do that, then I'm going to take and have all my Gateway Greens roads.
They're going to go.
To the CDB.
He's talking about private. You guys are talking, you guys are talking.
Your apples and oranges.
You're talking about defending. So Ed, I have, so I just need clarification from you. The starting of the process is a conversation with Tony, the attorney?
I believe the starting of the process is creating, for lack of better terms, Tony, would it be considered a committee? It would be a group. As I see it, it would be Chelsea, it would be Tony, it would be Stephen Bloom, and it'd be Russ Wire. And my recommendation would be there would be one board member at least on that group that starts the process. Well, there can only be one. And we don't need any more than that because it's going to come back.
Make that.
But the issue is.
I would say they'll do the board members.
I, that's yet to be determined. My point is is that you asked the question of how the process starts. The first thing is is that that group has to get together and start the process of what Tony described of creating the documents that would have called for or and allow a repeal of the.
Okay.
Hold on, this is my second question. So if we start that, I need to get, I need to be clear from you. Because if the process takes longer, this is something that will be changes to 2026, not 2025, I think.
Correct.
I think what I hear from you guys is the concern is it's too soon to do anything now. So I personally would be opposed to starting all of these, but not rushing to August and September, like let's start. I'm not going to stall.
Takes as long as it takes.
As long as it takes. The sooner we start, that's the date. It is what it is. It has to be done. I can't disagree. It needs to be done. Do I agree what the decision is going to be at the end? No. Do I believe that there's opportunities to get better? Absolutely. Do I think it has been unfair? Yes. So I'm in agreement of starting it, but I don't necessarily want to push it. That is something that we need to get done by August or September. I want us to take our time, educate ourselves.
I'm not totally sure that it's necessarily unfair. The facts will be what the facts are. But one of the most important parts of this is we got to keep this in mind. Is that when people are talking about what Pelican pays versus over here, everybody's got it in their mind of 14% and 84% or 86%. I want to have whatever those numbers are defined right at the outset. So for instance, if Pelican's already spending money on their roads and Gateway people are spending money on their roads, that's net, net. There's no change. Unless you want to put it all in one big bucket, pull it out the same way, it's still net, net. So we're really going to be focusing on where are the differences? And if the difference, you know, the only big difference that I personally have seen is the Sherman soccer fields and the parks. Now, that may or may not be accurate, but that's one of the things that the group's got to look into. Administrative cost, yeah, we've got it to 14.
No issue there.
And I don't, I don't think, I don't think the initial thing starts with a group or another committee that's formed. It's got to start here at the board. There has to be a consensus of what we're going to look into.
Well, if we. I think looking into is the consensus. Let's not make the decision. And I think when we say committee, we're so accustomed to outside. I think the committee is much similar to portal inside of the building that we had. There'll be one board member and it's really the professionals and guiding in that board member will just bring that information with Tony and with Chelsea.
Meaning, it's just, it's just staff within the board.
Committee is the proper word for it. So which.
We need whatever. We need the advice of our professionals.
If it becomes a committee that in Sunshine Law, all of our stuff is going to have to be noted. I look at this as a just, yeah, we have, if we get direction from the staff, from the board, if staff gets direction from the board today to engage the necessary consultants, bring those back or authorize Chelsea to engage a necessary consultant, said like Russ, to review this and prepare the statement of estimated regulatory cost and any other documents associated with.
And what's contained.
What, and the concept would be right now, the question would be to amend the rule, how so, or to repeal the rule?
He said repeal.
And if it's to repeal.
He's not interested in amending.
Yeah, then we would, I would suggest we have to come back to the board with a document that would be the document to be noticed as opposed to staff preparing something to repeal.
Would you be willing, would you be willing to have that established first and then make the decision on repealing or amending?
No, it's much more complicated. The first issue is is that, again, go to this, go to the statute. The statute is perfectly clear. It's all on benefited use, all on benefited use. I believe I have very adequately demonstrated, we have, and you have benefited use of our facilities here in those communities. I don't care.
No, no.
No, no, I'm not even going to argue that.
I'm not going to argue.
My point is, my point is, is that.
There's a full disagreement on that.
I'm on, my, my position is that my motion will be for repeal.
Okay.
I don't like the word, I don't like the word, I don't like the word committee. I think Tony's right on that. But we do have staff and I think it should be one person on the board that should be involved in this.
I'm just going to ask you.
We have a communication and then that's, it's got two components. It's that the creation or the establishment of the process for the rule, but it's.
I was going to ask you guys to just, if you guys wanted to have side conversations, keep you guys going to step out because it's really hard to, it's difficult to hear over here.
The second component is is that we've got to take, and the complication is that we have an assessment methodology change that has to be incorporated in this to make it work now. So that's, that's, hold on, hold on. I've only, I'm just starting here because this is not.
Yeah, but you can't talk 80% of the time.
Hold on, there's another issue here, people. There's another issue we got. We got a community called Arborwood. And a mistake was made two or three years ago by this board, by this board. We granted exception to Pelican Reserve that went way back, way back, 20 years, 19 years ago.
That's right.
But about two, three years ago, we allowed C5 to come in and get full exemption. Why didn't Arborwood?
I don't know.
How are you going to fix that?
Was it Arborwood's job to come in?
No, it was our job. It was our job.
And what you do.
Understand what I understand.
I would assume then that whoever this consultant was at the time did not do that.
Consultant didn't know anything about it.
Why not?
Why not? They know when, when any. They know when, when any commercial comes into this and they divide accordingly.
My opinion was, it's staff, somebody screwed up royally, but it's, it's more flagrant than that. I'm gonna go wear my Donald Trump hat, this goes deep, it goes into the state here. The issue is, how did C five, how did C five, a community, a discreet community by chapter six that had no interconnectivity?
I wasn't even here, Ed.
I don't care, I'm telling you what the problem we got. How did they get?
Thank you for outlining the problem.
How did?
And we understand that you are going to present a motion.
I'm just saying that the problem is more than that. Okay, if, if there's no other discussion, I'll make the motion.
Do you wanna, okay, so then my.
My motion?
Can it be simultaneously, can it be for, for amend, can, can you do it for?
No, it's, it's too complicated for the amendment, and there's no justification for an amendment, none whatsoever. The issue is that there is benefit use, benefited use, there's no arguing about that, so the issue is. Your people that come over here and go to our churches, your people that come over here and eat. Hold it, read, read the statutes, Bob, read the statutes, Carol, Bob, read the statutes. Tony, is it a benefited use or isn't it not?
Okay, the, the question is whether or not property benefits from district facilities or operations or infrastructure.
And if people are over here using it.
Did one cent of CDD money go into any of the churches?
Private property is not involved.
That you use the roads to get here.
Okay, Ed, let, let, hold on, let, let's pause order.
From a district infrastructure or service, that's the sort of the bottom line. And then whether or not somebody decides to use a particular commercial establishment. If they utilize district assets or facilities to get there, that's one thing that they benefit from that, but the, per se, having a commercial, private commercial is not, I mean, that's, that, that's different, and in one other aspect, just for net record, I heard a number of people in Pelican Reserve reference one ninety point oh three five. Though, that's not assessments, assessments are in one ninety, chapter one ninety-seven floor statutes, one seventy floor statutes, and also they're in one ninety, I think, point two one and point two two, but they're not in one ninety point oh three five. Those are like rates, fees and charges for pool, parks, recreation, water utilities. Just, just to clarify that, but I, I think the important part is whether or not, at the end of the day, the board can make a determination that all properties within Pel- Gateway benefit from various facilities, services and or infrastructure. Just as an example, in Pelican Marsh, in Gateway, I don't know if you're unfamiliar with Pelican Marsh in Naples, there's a community called Aston Gardens, it's a sister living facility, they're St. Croix. They are within the boundaries of the district, but they get nothing, they don't have drainage, water management, and they're on the outside of the district. They're not charged any assessments. So that's part of the methodology the assessment person need to look at when we go through this process, the board says repeal it, and then revise the assessment methodology, that'd be part of the discussion that the board has to go through. When looking at it, even though the rule, let's just say for sake of discussion, this interconnectivity budget philosophy rule is repealed, we're gonna still need to go through and determine whether or not properties benefit from, from the facilities or infrastructure and services of the district, and they could still come up with a, another decision. I mean, but again.
All these are things that would be discussed.
Repeal and revise, so it'll be a repeal and revise for some time.
Or it could just be a repeal, so that rule doesn't exist, and then you go to an assessment methodology that's not a real, but it's a methodology that's utilized.
Okay, so then I think I won't speak for Bob or, or Carol, so there is a possibility of repealing, and then either of you guys want to revise it then, it's not a damn deal, so you can repeal it and revise it, and I think you guys will be more comfortable with that, just not taking it and going it away, and it's over, decision is made, we'll take it and go it away, and then we revise it, and if it doesn't pass through the motion of revising, it doesn't pass, and if it passes, it passes. Would that make you more comfortable going with this, this way? You're just not add anything to this.
Are you asking me, does it make his motion more palatable? No.
Well, I'm asking the clarification from, I'm not even looking at Ed, the clarification that I got from Tony, because that's what I was trying to ask Ed, either, either is take it away completely or amend it, and he was not willing to budget on that, he just wanted to take it away completely, but what Tony's saying that while you can take it away completely, you can still implement and revise later, something that.
Well, once again. I think the board would then need to utilize Russ or some other consultant to look at the assessment methodology. See whether or not that needs revision or adjustment.
There is nothing, nothing absolutely that stands in the way that an alternative come back after the repeal process of suggesting developing an alternative amendment. At this point in time, I see absolutely nothing that anybody can convince me, and believe me, I've talked to a lot of attorneys on this, a lot of attorneys. Nothing stands in the way that why this thing should be amended, it needs to be simply repealed. Nothing I can find talking to other attorneys.
Okay, so.
Attorneys knowledgeable in this field.
Obviously, his motion is going to be not to repeal.
It would be to repeal.
Gonna be to repeal, period.
Period, and then, and then if he repeals, then any of us.
You have the opportunity to do that.
And, and then at that time, so at least.
And I, I would like to, also to be made clear that staff and attorneys and consultants are there to bring numbers and facts to the board for its consideration, but not to have an opinion, one way or the other.
That's, I understand. So that, that's, I haven't, I haven't made the motion, but that's.
Okay, he hasn't made the motion, so we can't second it, no, not yet, Doug has another, go ahead, Doug.
Yeah, I just, I just want to make sure I'm clear, um, from what Tony was alluding to. Is it counsel's opinion that Ed's recommendation, or at least his proposal slash concern with the existing structure that there is merit for, for his alternative solution, or maybe not solution, but just identifying that there could be some, some issues with that today? Or, Tony, are you saying that what Ed is, his position, that it does have some legal merit?
No, I'm not taking it, once again, the, back up, the, the request, the motion would be to begin the process to initiate rulemaking to repeal the existing rule called the budget philosophy or principal rule.
No, no, but what I'm, what I'm looking for, yeah, I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt, but what I'm looking for is, if, if, if it's counsel's opinion that what Ed is saying, that it has no legal merit, to be interpreted one way or the other, then, okay, that could be one thing, but if there is, if there is some legal merit or, or, or some potential interpretation that would support further conversation or, you know, further action or repeal, or, you know, um, different, different structure altogether, I just, I'm curious to see what your opinion is, and I'm not saying that what Ed is, I'm not asking you to say what Ed is saying is, is, you know, accurate, but does it warrant us moving forward and having additional conversations or due diligence around his, his proposal?
Are we wasting money if the legal opinion is that people are sharing the benefit by going to church and. That's not my role, I don't.
Oh, no, 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 again, again.
That's what he's saying, he's saying because people go to church and the schools. Okay, the key, the key. I, I focused on the aspect of whether or not a property benefits from district facilities or services in proportion to the, and, and the cost is in proportion to the benefit received. The cost is not exceeding the benefit received, that's sort of a basic test, I think Russ has gone over that many times. And so there's this, uh, uh, an opinion, it's out there that based upon of current conditions, that all properties within Pelican Gateway benefit from X, Y, Z services. However, there's a current rule that says under this rule, when you look at one aspect of it, at that time, this rule is adopted saying, based upon these parameters, the necessary benefit may not accrue to these properties, so therefore they don't have to pay assessments for A, B and C facilities, the board can revisit that, always has the ability to revisit that, and if necessary and appropriate repeal it based upon testimony, evidence, opinions, and that, and so that process is a valid process, Doug, and at the end of the day, the board will make a decision, it can't be arbitrary and capricious, based upon substantial competent evidence to support a decision, if, if it's there on the record, to repeal the rule. And again, you have to go through this whole analysis, so, uh, that's something that I'm not gonna prejudge. You know, once again, once you see, once you see the record, then you can say, hey, I'm really comfortable with so many challenges this, that will be successful in a challenge.
So the process is not to go ahead and do it, is to look into the process of doing it.
Well, the process would be to authorize staff to prepare the initial, I'll call it, rule with the notice of the action, just outline the proposed action, the short, plain explanation of the purpose and the effect of it. Look at that, and then we would publish that.
Okay, so then the decision will be made then, after all the information comes from staff, and then one. But the decision that necessarily is being made now, the decision to be made to look into it, come back to us, give us the information, now we're educated on everything from A to Z, now we'll make the decision, which that makes me more comfortable.
Okay, Flav, if, if I don't agree, disagree with any of that.
Really?
Really, I do not disagree with any of that, but if, what I would like to have in that consideration, whichever way we go, it might be choose side A or side B, I want to know what the economic change is.
That's part of what they have to do.
That's what I want to do. Because we're all arguing a hundred thousand dollars, it's a waste of money, if we're arguing over ten million, it's a significant.
Okay, so, so then maybe we'll make the motion and it'll be in agreement that we'll look into it, knowing that that's not, that once we have all the information, that's when we make the decision what we do next.
Well, and, and it could be either one, deny it, or two, suggest an, an amendment, and if you go through the amendment, is a totally separate.
No.
Process.
No, you just.
No, I'm just trying to make sure that everybody understands this process.
Trying to hit a moving target here.
I have spent, I have spent a month reading these rules and talking to other attorneys, I, I'm not gonna say I'm an expert, but I think I have a pretty good idea what the King's English says, I don't know if you've read it, but I have.
But, but then allow us to.
It allows you to do.
Okay, so, so you, so he's reasonable, Bob, after all.
So the word, the motion is, is that, my motion is, is that we immediately start the process of the repeal of chapter six of the rules of the district.
Not what you just said.
No, yeah, because it's the process, and then, then the, the part of the process is coming back to us, it's not, it's not, he's not repealing it as of now. It's to come to the process so they can go out there and get us the information, and in that later day, then if we choose to do so, and that's when he said repeal, amend, or just leave it as it is.
Beginning the process, once again, it's not gonna be the comprehensive. Statement of estimated regulatory cost, but again, it's just.
Sounds like a deal is getting done today, but it's not, it's, it's getting the information so we can make a decision later in the future of keep it the way it is, amend it, or take it away.
That's correct.
Okay, see?
That's my motion.
Okay, so I'll second your motion. I'm gonna call to vote. I'm in favor?
No.
Three to two, okay.
Shocking. And along, along those, along those lines.
We need to put.
Authorize Chelsea to engage necessary consultants, including Ross or others.
It's gonna cost money.
Yeah, it's a million dollars. That's what it's costing.
And then I guess the question is, and this one might be different than the litigation.
I'm sorry, what did you just say, Ed?
She says it's gonna cost us money, I said, yeah, a million dollars.
Ten million dollars is gonna cost us to go through this process?
He, he didn't say anything, go ahead, Tony.
No, I'm sorry.
Million.
Wait a minute.
Million dollars.
You're willing to spend a million dollars of CDD money just to be right?
You sound like Joe Biden, that's not what I said.
Okay, okay. Okay, let's just call for it, go ahead.
And what happens, Ed?
Tony.
If you lose.
Okay.
Are you gonna pay for all the expenses to do this?
This is a district, don't go down that road, Carol.
Tony, go ahead. I'm gonna start yelling in a second, I'm gonna get the Latin out, then you guys are gonna see what it is. I wear this brand for a reason today.
What, what I would suggest is that the first document we come back with be staff and consultant prepared. And then, then we come to the board with the proposed language, I think we, we, Russ has done that, I've done that before, and.
So we need to engage with Russ Wire.
And Steve.
And Stephen Bloom, with them from Arc and Tony Firm, to bring in the professionals and start this.
And, and the first thing needs to be done is you need to sit down and determine what needs to be done per check.
Let them do that, let. And then, then we do, then we appoint a liaison for the board after that, would that, would you be comfortable with that?
And, and that's what I intend, I suggest that we do as a group. From an unbiased position, I'd volunteer, just throw that out there. Now, outline the steps and outline the proposed language and.
Okay.
So if I could have board direction on that, please.
In a time frame to come back, if you can wait until.
But I think Tony's asking.
So you want direction, that's direction, you wouldn't be able to do it without it, yeah, thank you.
Yes, and then I guess a timeframe to come back with this initial document, July of twenty-five.
July.
Do what?
Twenty-five.
I just want to make sure they have time to do it.
I'd like, like to see this, I'd like to see.
May I, may I interrupt? I did have a conversation with Russ Wire, he, he manages six special districts, like us, he is in the middle of budgeting season. I know that we're not pushing right now for this current fiscal, but I would ask that we at least give him until August fifteenth, if not later, because he is managing six districts.
And again, it doesn't need to be the detailed report, but we do need to have some initial idea of what the effect and flavor we get.
He's, he's, he's got a bigger problem in trying to figure out how we handle Arborwood, that's a different issue, but I, I could say, yeah, wait till after August fifteenth to at least address this issue. But Arborwood, that's got to occur immediately.
The board did ask for the September meeting to be the, um, the rules for the CCNA for that workshop, so if you want to swap this out for that, we can and push that one back.
And that's what I think that will be, I will do September, okay, that'll be good, okay, September.
So that will be the only item on the second meeting in September.
Yes.
The second meeting of September will be.
No, I thought we always had our workshops the first meeting.
We did, but because of the extent of the item, the board asked that we have this one single item can be the whole meeting of the second September meeting.
Okay, unless, unless there's something we have to vote on.
Every, whenever we have that meeting, all five of us have got to be.
And I'm, I'm gonna be in Europe at the first two weeks of September, but I'll be here for that.
On the end of September into October.
When, when you say the end, what part, will you be here the nineteenth?
Yes.
So we're all here the nineteenth.
So the nineteenth is today.
They're not here the first meeting in October, and I don't know what the date is.
What day we talk, which month and day?
September nineteenth.
September the nineteenth. So by that date, we will come back with a proposed notice intended.
They want to have a conversation, I'm gonna ask you again, just to step out of the room.
We get a notice of the intended action, a short, plain explanation of the purpose and effect, and then the full text of the proposed rule in the summary. So that's what we plan on coming back with in September, and then the board can then advertise if necessary, and then we can go from there for the public hearing, if, if one is help.
And, and as we get right now, the twenty twenty-five budget.
Economic benefit, or the economic part of it.
When, the, the question is, will we have, will Russ be able to have the statement of estimated regulatory cost available by September nineteenth, and it sounds like he might be able to. If so, then we can all at once put out the notice and say we have this statement of estimated regulatory cost, here's the hearing date, if you all want to provide your alternative, you have twenty days.
And in the meantime, we do the twenty twenty-five budget as is, with the exception of the Arborwood, we, we've got to resolve that.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with that, so defer to that.
All right, so we're all set, so then, do you guys want to take a five-minute break and then go to the swing agenda?
Please.
So let's just take a five-minute recess.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Bobby, we're unmuted whenever you're ready.
Yes. I did, I had that coffee candy back there.
Pick up with Steven.
Alright, everyone, well, let's go, let's get back, Steven, are you online?
Hi, Steven.
Yes, hey, good afternoon, everyone, can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great, today I just have our task authorization update. First up is irrigation pump station generator, we're still anticipating the generator to be delivered in the end of January next year, irrigation force main improvements, this is the redundant irrigation force main lines. We're working right now with Lee County to just get their buy-in on some modifications we've made since we had hundred percent plans and we're still waiting for potential funding from HMGP. The lower Hawthorne well, the well has been drilled, crews right now are working on the wellhead and it's a little wet out there right now, so crews are probably gonna have to wait till it dries out to proceed with underground piping and electrical improvements. That project is still slated to be done in September timeframe. The utility storage building, the material has been delivered, the contractor is working through scheduling for site work and some permitting for building permits, so that project's moving forward. Gateway admin building, we're opening the bids tomorrow, I think at 2:00 PM or 2:30, so that'll okay, there you go, so we'll have some exciting stuff to talk about tomorrow amongst ourselves. Phase two year two lake bank restorations, these are remaining lakes for Met Tower, I did confirm with them this week, they're, you know, planning to start these as soon as the rains let up at the end of summer. FY twenty-five lake bank design, these are in front of SRF now and it goes to their August hearing. Chelsea's been talking with Lee County permit reviewers and we should be getting our permits this week or early next for all of them. FY twenty-four lake construction management, B and Z is wrapping up in seventy-eight and eighty-two. We did our substantial completion walkthrough, everything looked pretty good, there were some minor sod issues, some outstanding items like the fence we talked about earlier, overall, the projects look good. The remaining lakes, the other four are with MRI and they feel like it would be best to wait until the dry season to proceed with their lakes, so we are on hold until the rains let up for them to start work. The public works storage building, we are waiting DO, we are waiting to submit the DO and to provide hundred percent of the design plans to staff for review. The master park plan, I don't think there's been any new updates, I think we're waiting for comments on that first deliverable to the permitting permitting agencies. FWA, we're waiting for them to start working gateway for us to start our services of inspecting gateway assets. That should be in the next, within the next two months. Pelican Preserve Pond Thirty-Six, there is a crew out there doing lake bank restoration, we've been out there couple time a week, couple times a week checking in on them and helping them out. They've made a lot of good progress, they've started installing some sod in areas, they've got most of it graded and that project, they're hoping to be done within the next, we'll say three weeks, they, they're trying to shoot a little faster than that, but it's probably gonna be three weeks. Development updates, Arborwood, they're still working through their punch list items. Santa Lou's, they're also working through their punch list items, we had two meetings with them this week to go over them. It looks like they'll be able to wrap up our utility items this month or next, and then the lake bank, it seems like they're probably going to address that at the end of summer likely. And Daniel's Parkway Apartments and Garrett FM, we are waiting for resubmittals. I'm sorry, we just got Garrett FM resubmit this week, we're reviewing it now and that should be the last one and the next time you hear about that, it should be going to the board for permit approval.
Steven, did you mention Lake One-O-Nine?
Uh, yeah, I think, I'm pretty sure Chelsea, that email that you had with Ieeksa, I think that permit got approved is what she was saying, correct?
Yeah, the permit is, the permit should be here any day now, we got confirmation it was approved, so we're gonna mobilize, have a pre-con with well, we already had the pre-con with Brad, so just get him moving as soon as we get that permit.
Just a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
Alright.
The, we were preparing to go to Southwater.
Southwater.
Yeah, with a bunch of projects, are we all set for that?
We're still
It's, I think it's supposed, we're supposed to go in August, aren't we?
To SRF?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, the August hearing, we have, I believe, Steven, how many applications?
For SRF, we have, are you talking about for the lakes, Chelsea?
All of it for SRF.
Seven, I think.
We have the design loan, we have the construction loan, we have the additional funding for the ponds and then we have the meter project, so we have four applications on the request for inclusion, August fifteenth hearing.
Okay.
So, we're
And we're all set for that, we got our numbers in place, we're
Everything's been
Since June, I think.
Yeah, we just got word last week that the meter side of it is good to go for the August RFI.
And by the way, they are doing a really great job on Pond Thirty-Six out there in Pelican Preserve, which, according to this, it's gonna be done the end of July, so it probably won't be on the list even to next time, right?
Um, they're hoping to be done, but we met with them this week and they told me two and a half weeks this week, so
Okay.
You know, there's, you know, their contract is good till September, they're gonna be done way ahead schedule. I wouldn't be surprised if it goes into August a little bit for minor touch-ups and restoration.
Okay, but by the time the new budget year starts, that will be all done, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so then there'll be no items on this list at all from Pelican Preserve.
Pelican's portion of the admin
Just pointing that out.
Pelican's portion of the admin building will continue to be on this list.
Just making an observation.
Yes.
You did.
That's my job.
You did.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Steven, Arborwood Phase Three, I know at Santa Lou's, we now have some understanding with Lennar on a timeline of them getting the issues that are outstanding fixed. Have you guys had the same meeting with Lennar at Arborwood Phase Three and have the same understanding, or are they not talking?
They're, they're talking, they've kind of been handling it piecemeal, just item by item and, you know, they're, we're working through it with them.
The Arbor, Steven, the Arborwood meeting, you had preceded the Santa Lou's meeting, correct?
We didn't, I didn't have a meeting with Arborwood, that, there was, there was two Santa Lou's meetings this week, Wyatt met them out there for utilities in Santa Lou's and then we met them for the lake bank this week, so we've just been commuting via email for Arborwood.
Tony, what, what, so Steven can hear, what alternatives are available to us to, let's say, encourage Lennar to finish their projects? Do we have a penalty provision, or is it just simply we hold the bond?
Hold the bond.
That's about it?
Yes.
Okay.
I can tell you that I did get an email from Alex this morning and I, it appears that there is some pressure from the Lennar folks themselves to get that bond released, so
I heard, heard that before. My, my deal is, as far as I'm concerned, and I'll make it real perfectly clear, I'm not voting for releasing that bond until they start showing that they're honest. They're, they're just duping us along, it's ridiculous.
Have they paid all applicable utility fees for the water sewer?
Utilities are, are done in Arborwood, it's the, the pond bank stuff, and some storm waters.
I thought there was still, still some, talking to Steven, I thought there was still some utility issues.
Steven, is there any other additional utilities in Arborwood?
We just have
No, utilities have been done for a long time, they were ready to be turned over last year, I believe. There was like a minor lift station issue that came up after we closed everything out, but that's been addressed, so it's mainly storm water.
They requested to turn over the utilities, but I
So we're, we're tying, we're tying it all together.
Yeah, that, well, what I was gonna ask was typically, I recall, the approval that's provided under the permit criteria manuals for utilities and subdivision improvements like storm water, roads, everything. So that, to the extent if they're not ready, I agree with Chelsea, if they've not complied with the storm water side, then they're still not compliant with the total approval that was provided, so that would be basically, no, we're not taking over, even considering taking the utilities.
Would just seem like this thing is dragging on and on and on and on.
I think between the two projects, we've got their attention.
Yeah, good.
Steven, I got one comment. And I'm looking for, looking for your help on this, going back to Pond Thirty-Six. It is my understanding that on a Friday night, the contractor made a decision to run a de-watering pipe across Cypress Cove Boulevard in the middle of the road and that there was neither authorized nor blessed nor part of the plan. And it subsequently resulted in to say almost a lynch mob, but pretty close to that, with people hitting this thing at twenty miles an hour on a golf course. And I don't know this to be fact, but one person allegedly got hurt when they were thrown off the golf course because, and it was a pretty significant jump. Is it accurate that the, that was malfeasance by the contractor?
Um, I mean, it was a bad idea, yes.
Say that again?
It was a bad idea for them to do that, yes.
And it was not according to what the plan was, I knew they subsequently discharged the site supervisor because of that.
Yeah, typically, we, we, we get a de-watering plan from them as a submittal before they start, but our, our scope and project for this wasn't approved until after they had started, so I think they had some leeway there before we got involved. But, yeah, that person was fired and then they switched to discharging into the control structure at the south end of the pond.
They finally figured out how to put it underground, not across the road.
Yeah, correct.
If you can liken it to going over a speed bump or a parking stop in a parking lot, that's what it was like, and it happened in the dark.
Yeah, from
There.
If Daniel's there, he can speak to it better, but from what I heard, they, they threw
Oh, they had some
I think they, I think they kind of snuck it in on him and he didn't really have a chance to, you know, say yes or no, I think they did it without his
I know that the pond chairman spent four hours out there slowing people down and alerting them to it until we finally got it fixed. But, oh, here, there's Daniel's here, but I just wanted to make note of the fact that that occurred.
Yep.
Yeah.
It's been resolved.
Okay.
For guys.
Just for clarity, Bob.
Yeah.
Yeah, they, they called on a Thursday night after they had already installed it and the means of that that was approved prior to that was what they're currently doing right now, and it was, it was never an authorized action by anybody other than the contractor themselves.
Well, it was the first time we used that contractor, they've really responded since then and they've recovered a lot.
They've also
But this was a, yeah, okay.
Alright.
Thank you.
If someone feels they have a dispute with what happened, is there a process whereby they can
Clarify, Daniel?
To contact the district.
Be contact the district?
Customer care.
Okay.
Yeah, somebody said
Is the contractor obliged to help out? Help pay expenses or whatever?
We hold their insurance for a reason, so we will pass all of those coins off on to the contractor.
I only heard things verbally, I've not seen anything in writing, but I know when I went to the town center that morning, what did I get in the earful?
So, admin items?
Pat Hayes has been here for two hours and fourteen minutes, if he wants to come on up and give an update on the
I'm Pat Hayes, I'm the lousy broker you guys have hired to sell these credits. Neither one of us are doing very well right now making money on them, there's a couple of reasons, I'm gonna start with the sales. There, the, the best way to sell these, the quickest way to sell these on a project in the city Fort Myers is with the multi-family project. It's two hundred and fifty-seven dollars a door for fire impact fees. So if you get a bigger project, a two, three, four hundred unit project, you know, that starts to talk about a little savings, if you've got a house for three hundred dollars to get like a D.R. Horton, somebody that's pulling permits in the city right now. I think account for one or two houses is very difficult sale, they, they don't wanna fool with saving you know, a hundred dollars a house when they're doing two houses a month, so that's been part of the problem I've had selling these, now the last ones I was selling here go back a few years, selling these credits, I had about two million dollars worth of road impact fee credits to sell and that number, you know, is around twenty-seven hundred dollars a door. So, when I could, you know, if, if somebody's building three hundred units, you know, it's a eight hundred thousand dollar road impact fee assessment, let's say, and you're saving them a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. They call you back and they say, yeah, where do I write the check? And then you say, by the way, I've got these fire credits I wanna sell, and you just package them up and you know, the local guys, I deal with all the time, you know, the local builders, if they're doing a permit, they call me, hey, do you have any credits for sale, so you know, unfortunately, there's two things that have slowed us down, one is the interest rate, some of these projects they put on hold in the city. It's easy to go online and see what's on the books, a lot of stuff on the books in the city, a lot of stuff's on hold, and then there's been one project which they were out of Atlanta and usually if you can get the person that's writing the check on the phone to talk to, the person that's writing the check, you get a long ways, but getting to that person sometimes isn't that easy. Gotta go through the so, you gotta get them to believe that, hey, you know, you're gonna save sixty and eighteen grand, now would I tell you to deepen the discount, I, I don't think that would hurt. It, it, it probably isn't gonna, isn't, not what's keeping me from selling them right now. There's a few projects that are in right now that may pull that are, I think, will go with us, if they do pull permits coming up, we've got nine months to sell these, we got till April of twenty-five, and then these things expire.
That's the one thing we don't want to happen.
That's what
Well, and I, I, believe me, I understand that, I don't want them, see them expire either.
Whatever it takes, whatever you recommend.
That's what I'm gonna say, I guess I'm looking for an accommodation from you, like, what do you need to
We'll get something
As I'm saying, if I told you, you know, let's give them sixty percent, if I told you that, I'm not, still not sure I'd sell them in the next nine months, what I'm looking for hopefully is maybe we can get creative in extending these, now the county and the city have an inter-local agreement. So what happens when you deal with the city of Fort Myers on their impact fee credits? You have to, you go through Lee County, usually the county attorney and the impact fee coordinator at Lee County look at it, and unfortunately, that's not probably where we wanna go with it, we'd rather just go to the city, and like, for instance, the guy came in with the artwork today, wants to put the artwork I mean, I'm just, I'm not saying that's a good idea or a bad idea, but if there's a niche or something, you can say, well, hey, how about, we'll pay you ten percent. Every impact fee credit we, we move out of here, we'll, we'll send the city of Fort Myers to whatever fund they wanna put it in, so they robbing Peter to pay Paul. Maybe they've got plenty of fire right now and something else they don't have. The, the other thing about it is that there's a fifty-six, rough fifty-five point something CPI adjustment, so there's sixty, fifty-five percent. If it's eight hundred thousand in there, there's another four hundred, and it's almost a million three in these credits, that's what's sitting up there right now, that's the value of them.
Look, Pat, if I could, if I could inter, interject real quick, so these fire impact credits that were part of the Pelican Preserve, they were already extended once, they expire April first of twenty twenty-five. When these first came about and we re-upped our, our contract with Pat, the board authorized up to a thirty percent discount on these, so you gave Pat full authority to go up to thirty percent. As you all know, within the city, over the past handful of years, there, there was, I believe there was a moratorium at one point on building construction, they've had countless issues with water. So I think we have a viable case to go to the city, which I've already emailed the, the impact fee coordinator, Glennis Buck, who Pat is intimately familiar with. Not in that sense, though.
No.
An extension.
And, and, and ask for an extension, now, my question to them, so like Pat alluded, there is an inter-local agreement that essentially the city has taken, adopted whatever the county does for their impact, after the last time we had that, you all approved Pat Hayes's contract, Laura and I went downtown to meet with Dave Partner and, and Mark Ott with Lee County and said, hey, would you consider doing this extension, the word that we're getting from the city is, you have to approve it as the county. Kind of backwards, but at the time, the county said they're not interested in, in doing any additional extensions. Since, since then, I've emailed Darla Bonk, waiting on a response from her to try to push it through that stance, but I think at a minimum, two years extension is what we're looking for, just, I think there's enough justification between those, the moratorium and the water issues that they had to justify that, that extension.
Darla's the city.
Correct, and the city is the one who is holding our fire impact fee credits.
Okay, so we need them to move?
Correct, but they've adopted the inter-local agreement with the county, so it's kind of
Well, I've not touched it in a while, but, so the county needs to sign off on it and provide a legal opinion, because one that with regards to the ability to extend the timeframe, is that correct?
Yeah.
So that would be, which department, Pat, will not touch those guys?
Well
County attorney's all
The county attorney and the impact fee coordinator and probably what you'll find is a person by the name of Audra Ennis that
Oh, she's still there?
Yeah, Audra's still there, she was the impact, and Audra is gonna be looking at that, and I mean, I can always get her ear, where she may not agree with me, but at least she'll listen.
Well, where, where I was coming on this, Pat, is Pelican has a direct personal relationship with Darla, we've met people over there that are a phone call. If it will help at all, send me something, I'll make sure it gets
I just emailed her yesterday, so I'm waiting to hear back, but ultimately, it's
What is it, sort of, about eight hundred thousand?
Yes, but there's
But it's worth one point four because
Say it again?
It's worth one point four because of the CPI.
Yes, there's a
Cost of living, that's going
Yeah, I mean, if, if I was I mean, here's what we're talking about, right now at eight hundred thousand, three thousand multi-family units have to permit between now and April or four or five million square feet, I mean, Elon Musk has gotta come to town. You, you know, something's gotta happen, that hasn't ever happened before here.
Pat, it's a building, building permit, correct?
Yes, yes, and, and we're talking about
Let's go ahead and maybe authorize Pat to go up to fifty percent instead of the thirty?
Well, absolutely, I wanna do that too, but if we can put pressure on Darla, send me whatever email
Let's hit, take it from multiple angles, so that's, so do you wanna motion or do you wanna just
I would like a motion and I'll bring back the ratified and update his contract for fifty percent.
So we're gonna
So my motion
Currently.
Yeah, oh yeah, parallel paths.
Agreed.
So I have that motion, Carol, second, for the fifty percent, up to fifty percent. On favor?
Aye. Alright, we will bring that, that back
Didn't mean to just cut it short, but
I think also just quickly, if you give staff authorization to approach the county, to try and work with the county
Well, that's the other part, it may be work with Cecil.
Yes.
If, you know, we'll work with Darla and the city, you work with Cecil and county and get everybody going.
Well, and I, I mean, I can work with Cecil and, and
Okay.
And bring more, I mean, you know, but, but by the time, it won't get there, it'll just be administrative, this is what concerns me, is that getting it, you know, maybe some pressure from the top down might help. But unless we do that, unless there's some pressure from the top down, it's just gonna get administrative, who come right back out to the city, the city's gonna do it or the county says.
You take care of Darla?
Yes, 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 yes.
So, fifty percent.
I have your permission, I mean, I'll talk to
Motion, you're good.
Yeah.
So, Pat, we'll all update our agreement and get it back to you and they get ratified.
One thing we don't wanna do is let it die, if we get to
A lot of ridiculous
Too much money.
So the caveat to this
Money, and, I mean, I hate to see it burn up, just like you do.
Vaporize, fire impact, burn up.
And the county and the city are notorious for waiting, wanting it to burn up, I mean, they've
Oh, absolutely.
So
So the key, the key to this is developers have to be submitting their building permit, not their zoning permit, not their development order, their building permit, shovel and ground ready to
That's his building.
Actually, they have to be in the position of getting their permit issued. So it all has to go through the whole system, so for instance, if somebody came in today with a four hundred unit project and submitted their development order for the county, or even their vertical building permit, but their architectural drawings, and said, we need a building permit, it might take three or eight months, probably not.
Yeah.
So, so I've gotta go back from, let's say, next month back and try to hit those people that are in the system now and that are, and see how we can do this, and, and possibly, even if they won't give you an extension for two years, they would allow some of these people we've dealt with to use the credits.
Okay.
You know?
That was funny.
So I think we have, I think we have, I think we have a good plan, so, so the three of us, and then it's clear, and then anything else you have?
Yeah. Pat. So is there actual money there?
No, it's just air.
It's just air?
It's, it's, that the fire, when, once the house gave them the land for the fire station, then they said, here, you know, it's
The economy and everything
It's
Goes out.
Count, other than what the county creates and puts a number in there and says, here's what you get.
But there isn't actual money that goes back to the city for any reason.
Yeah.
If the time elapses and we don't sell anything and all that sort of stuff.
Whatever the assessment is of the, of the, each individual item, there's an, an amount, then there's an administrative amount, we don't get to transfer it, and then the total amount.
You know, what happened was the district issued a bond, bond paid for the fire station.
I don't, I don't know.
The fire station went to the city, West Hill transferred the credits to the district.
And I mean, West Hill, they had four million dollars worth of road credits also back in the day, which I sold for them back in the nineties, that's far back, you know, that
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for commenting.
Thank you all, I appreciate it.
Alright, next time we have Steven Bloom online for the quarterly report.
Okay, good evening, so this is your summary through June, basically seventy-five percent way through the fiscal year. Kind of starting with revenue, ninety-nine percent of your annual assessments are already collected through June. So obviously, that's a, a very good number to be able to report. Overall, you know, the, the numbers look very good compared to budget, we looked at, you know, last time utility billings and right now, you know, through June is about favorable by about a hundred and seventy-one thousand compared to our budget. And obviously, there's still another quarter left to go. The other thing of interest on there, and again, we talked about this last time, are kind of the interest earnings by fund. So when you look at it, again, obviously, capital projects is, is, that interest is off of the bond money, but again, that's almost one point one million dollars of interest through the first, you know, nine months of the fiscal year. So we're always very conservative when we do the budget for obvious reasons, but again, this is a good number to be able to see and, and kind of keep going with as we continue to build, and the subsequent pages, I'll, I'll show you all the different bank accounts, but I just wanted to kind of point that out in the summary of, of that being, you know, kind of a really good number to see continue to grow, you know. In, in terms of spending on the other side of the equation there, you can see very good numbers and percentages. All the funds are, are favorable to the budget, the only one that's not is Stony Brook, it's just a, you know, a couple points above, but again, good picture to be able to show nine months kind of here through, through the fiscal year. Obviously, this is a summary, there's a lot of numbers and accounts that go into your financials, but we always like to provide this top level for those of you who don't really like to go through all the numbers, this kind of gives you a one-page look at it and then you can kind of go from there. And again, it is like, you can see all, you know, we've talked, we haven't talked so much about the investments in a long time, but as you can see there on the page, still a lot of, of, of good T-bills running through there, you know, four point nine or five Um, you know, four point nine or five percent, five point one. Um, you know, a- again, this is all what the board.
Go ahead, sorry.
No, I was about to say, this is what the board requested. It's good to be able to put it, put it on the screen and show you that, hey, here's what we're doing and, and we're kind of. Uh, you know, um, benefiting from the market, but the, the district specifically is benefiting and they got all their accounts in, in, in good shape. Uh, and that's kind of my summary.
Any questions for Stephen?
No, we get, it looks like we're getting about a five percent yield.
Yeah.
Pretty close.
Hi, any questions?
So generally, Stephen, you would say the district's in good shape?
Yeah, no, I, I, I think the good, you know, there's still three months to go, so, you know. We gotta keep up the good work, but yeah, in, in terms of spending, in terms of revenue. Look, there's a lot of districts out there that are, you know, are nowhere near ninety-nine percent. Um, out at this point, so being that good with your assessments, that's kind of the first step with your revenue. You know, when you look at that, you know, that's the highest portion of your revenue type. When you look at the breakdown there on the right. So to be, you know, that close and, and again, this is only through. Um, June, uh, most likely that last percentage will come in. We've looked at. Assessments over the last several years and it's always kind of come in at a hundred. Um, so, uh, very good to be able to show that. And like I said, um, definitely excited about the interest income.
All right, thank you, Stephen.
You're welcome.
And, uh, Stephen, is there any area that we should start paying attention to? Not that it's a problem, but maybe a trend that we should be looking at going into next year?
Well, th- this is no- nothing new and I'm not telling the board anything new, but just from in terms of, of why I highlighted utility billings. Obviously, there's a lot of projects, there's different things going on. Making sure that your, um, utility revenue is generating sufficient, uh, funds. To not only cover your operations, cover your capital, but we've also talked about building back up. Kind of the cash reserves for the utility fund. So that is always something that, that I keep an eye on and, and, and certainly. A worth, uh, for the board to kind of keep an eye on that as well.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so let's go to C. Do you want to do C and D together? Or is it, no, okay.
I believe one of the property owners is online.
If we have any questions?
If you have any questions.
I don't.
Okay, I think the, uh, property owner is online and he called me this week and we've talked quite a bit about the bill and. He doesn't dispute the usage. It's fifty-two thousand gallons that he can't account for. He and his wife were home when this occurred. Uh, the district did go out and, uh, visit the house, couldn't find any obvious source of the. The, uh, water loss or where it might be, like, he doesn't have a pool. And he didn't have any running toilets or anything else. It covered over a period of about four days that this event took place. And it's hard for me to imagine fifty-two thousand gallons of water. Nobody sees, notices. But it happens. So here's where we are. He's asking for further, he's already given a hundred seventy-eight dollars of consideration at the, the, uh, policy.
Because that's our policy, right?
Policy adjustment. He's got a remaining balance of seven hundred and sixty-six dollars on this bill. And he's looking for some further consideration if we can possibly.
Leslie is online if you have any specific questions about.
And I did talk to Leslie also, but. And the gentleman is online, his last name is Patel. Are you, are you still there?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Is there anything you would like to add to what we said?
Yes, sir. I, I'm thanking you, all of the board members to take the consideration. For the unusual bill and I cannot explain or. Nobody has been able to explain me, where is this water gone? Is that is a meter or what is the reason that number came up?
I have a hard time hearing.
Native American born is.
Okay, I think Chelsea and I talked about this early today, right?
Yes, well, yeah, we talked about.
But yes, so do you want to recap it, Chelsea? I mean, it's pretty clear.
Leslie, well, let me let Leslie. To the agenda item or any additional information you wanted to give to the board?
No, only that the, we were able to obtain the data. Uh, we can never tell anyone how or where the water goes. But, uh, we're able to at least drill down that it started eight AM. On a Saturday and ended exactly or around eight AM on a Wednesday. So I can't really.
The, the facts are not in dispute, I don't believe. And, and I tried to cheer him up by telling him the next person we're gonna talk about got a twenty-three hundred dollar bill, but that didn't really help.
So I, 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 I'm fine with the way, you know, following. Policy meeting.
So we, what we've offered is a payment plan, uh, to help with, with a little bit of the reprieve. We've already given the unknown. Um, credit, uh, but the meter did show that the water passed through it.
Passed through. Do you want a motion from us?
We, we will need direction, yes.
Can I say something?
He wants to speak.
Yeah, go ahead.
Right ahead.
Okay, uh, as we got, I got a call, we look into it all the. Possessions, on the come on, there was nothing leak. There is walking around in the, in the yard. There's no, no place. Was bad or soaking and there is no crater or anything where. Water should be, if it's been used, it should be somewhere. Obvious that it's leaking, like, it's, it's not in the yard. I feel that it's something. Uh, would like to request not to charge me those kind of, uh. Give some reprieve in the, those bill charges.
So can you clarify just what you're requesting of the district? Are you requesting your, your average bill amount or are you requesting a total? Uh, credit?
I would like to use it as a regular, uh, average bill. I, I would like to pay for that.
Okay, so the gentleman has, uh, beyond the credit that has already been given, uh, is requesting the average bill. Uh, that he charged. Keep in mind, we do have the true up at, at the end of every year, we do get our water from the county, so we're gonna pay for this one way or the other.
And the average bill is about seventy dollars.
The water, the, my, my point is the water that goes through the meter and we did follow our policy and procedures on this one. I have no problem with the payment plan.
So, so, so the, the water went through the meter. And we have the sewer complication also.
Yes.
So we got double whammy.
And, and, and we're being charged for it to the county to this minute, so.
Free water, we, somebody's.
Yeah, so, so, and that, and that's my problem. So I think, I think I will stay with just allowing the payment plan.
Well, I would like to see him, um, he's basically asking for six hundred and, what was that figure?
Ninety-seven.
Ninety-seven dollars. I would like to give him an additional reduction of three hundred dollars.
Do you want to make that motion?
I do.
And, and the, what the, the basis would be?
We can't say what happened. He can't say what happened. Nobody knows what happened. But it was all within four days.
But what a way, uh, water did goes to the meter. So that's, that's. If it didn't go through the meter and we don't know what happened, then I have no problem.
Basically saying, let's split the baby in half.
So that's your motion?
And that's my motion.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion a second. Let's call for, will, uh, if we will say, yes?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Doug?
Aye.
So we will give an additional three hundred dollar credit?
Just the one thing we gotta remember.
I understand.
I get, I get the appreciation of consideration, but it hap- I'll be. And I'll be get punished for no reason, uh, no, I don't, uh.
All right.
Thank you very.
Thank you very much, okay.
Leslie, our utility staff will be in touch. Thank you so much.
Now the fun one.
Fun one.
All right, any questions?
I don't have any questions.
I have no questions.
And what is he, anybody, what are they asking for?
Uh, same thing.
Same as I came.
Except the amount is considerably greater.
The average.
Right, well, you're gonna use the same logic, you're gonna see me on this one.
Well. But how did it happen? We don't know.
That's Leslie. Leslie, can you shed any light on this one?
Um, we do not know the. In this case, we were not getting data from the MIU, the transmitter on the meter box. So the usage wasn't discovered until, um, billing.
I mean, someone just told me, but eventually it catches up and then they adjust it. Like, this is not uncommon, you know, we'd, we'd go both ways. If there's a reduction, we adjust it up and we adjust it down, so.
And the people were here or they weren't here?
They're seasonal. They were here and then they left and then the large usage was consumed.
Okay.
And the utility crew came out and found nothing errant or obvious? Like a hose running in the.
Leslie.
No, nothing was found on the property to indicate water usage.
Since then, we've changed out the meter, correct, Leslie?
Correct.
And, and we're, and we're still, well, up, up until the meter was asked to be turned off completely, we were still seeing. Usage, not as much as we did before, but there is still some usage and the resident is not in town.
There's definitely a leak somewhere. The water is going through.
So we, per, per the rules, have given the credit, um, given as much credit from an administrative standpoint. The resident is still, is looking just like the pri- prior resident, average bill.
I have one question, because one's a vacant house and the other is, they're occupied. Do the residents have the potential to go out and turn off the water themselves if they're leaving?
They're supposed to request it from the district.
But it can be done. You could turn off the water.
Leslie, can you confirm?
Yes, they can turn off, they can request to have the service turned off. There is a service charge of twenty-five dollars.
Okay, and then turn it back on later, but that's, that's a lot cheaper than this bill, but okay.
Fifty bucks.
Yeah, versus twenty-three hundred.
So is anybody gonna make a motion on this one?
Nope.
Make the motion. Make the motion as, uh, what staff recommended.
I'll second.
On favor?
Aye.
All right, we will implement payment plan and contact the property owner. Thank you. All right. Uh, the next item, if you're ready, Paul there?
Yes, I am.
Uh, ultimately, uh, uh, I'll just, does anybody have any questions? We've put all the details in the background of the.
I did not.
I did.
So we're looking to self-fund the design out of the existing funds that we have and not take out an additional. Uh, loan on this and incur, incur additional costs. So we're looking for your approval. And Tony was gonna have a resolution ready for us.
Do, do authorize the board to, the chair to sign a resolution, uh, incorporating the findings in the memorandum. Authorize the chair to sign.
I assume.
There are motion and a second on favor?
Thank you.
I'll let SRF know as well, because they are pending, there's actually a, uh, pending loan for this project, so I'll let them know.
That was E, only.
We're gonna skip to.
Now we're gonna go to G.
Yes.
Which is in U.S. So the Parks and Rec survey discussion. I mean, this could really, I mean, I don't think you have any questions.
The, the, the only, the only thing I saw on this was, and I, I passed it on to, uh, Chelsea. Was the, uh, uh, results were a little confusing, at least as it relates to Gateway Greens. Because nine of these communities that are down below are Gateway Greens. Uh, and, and people didn't understand when they signed in. They might sign in as Champions Green, but they're in Gateway Greens. So what I did is I went through and I added up all the percentages and the percentages showing are here right now. Uh, basically doubles. Uh, so Gateway Greens represented about thirty-nine percent of the total one. Which I, I was expecting that, but when it came out this way and Hampton Park was bigger, I said something's wrong. So it was, they, they were additive, but other than that, it, it, it is what it is.
Individually, like, the first day that the survey was out there, there was.
They put it under other?
They, they put it under other for some of them, but I did update the survey so that they could choose their community, so that there was also. So these again are unaudited. I, this is exactly how it came out of Survey Monkey. I didn't make those adjustments like Mr. Tinkle mentioned. But, you know, I adding the, the people in the other to their respective communities, so it's completely un-audited.
And, and there's no way that we can go back and, uh, let's say, discount, uh, uh, multiple votes from one house. No way to do that.
They had a conversation with Chelsea about this. Public IP addresses is the issue.
I know, that's the issue.
So.
Well, you don't have it.
They pick me to among the communities across that IP address, so that tells me that somebody went and said, I live here. I live here, then they went back and said, I live here. So there was only one that was like that when I.
I strike?
Yeah, yeah.
Were, were they from Gary, Indiana?
I saw the email that went out and let's not talk about that.
In, in light of the earlier discussion today about interconnectivity. I would request that the same survey goes to Pelican. Since there's a possibility that they may be paying for that. So let's ask.
So I'll be against all that.
Could be twenty-five hundred knows, I don't know, but I'm just saying, really.
And I, listen, I, I get it. I, I will repeat myself when it comes to the survey. The survey is, is, it, it, it's a tool that I will personally use to make my decision. It's not gonna be solely based on it. Because I will tell you, I have seen emails that came out from HOAs, um. Within the lines of, hey, you can vote multiple times. I have seen emails go out. So to me, I take it at face value, but I also. You know, I'm out there in the community a lot, so I am at the pool, I am at the soccer place, I am at the soccer field, I am there and I am talking and I'm engaging. And to me, it's gonna come to cost. Like, to, that's just.
That's for all of us.
So, so.
I got a lot of feedback at the red, white, and blue.
And which was?
The people that showed up, there was quite a few that were more in favor of this, but again.
That's the thing.
Because they had all the kids and I understood.
And, 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 and that's our challenge when it comes to people want to oppose, no different. You know that, that Pelican. Well, let's get our red shirts and go in. They have a red shirt.
But seriously, uh, seriously though.
But yeah.
Would like to at least send it to them, let them respond or not respond. Keep it separate, but just see what that sentiment is. Because, because if they are going to be asked later on this year, the possibility.
But, but I would tell you that, that I don't have a problem with that, but then, then the eighty-eight sixteen, it's not gonna be an accurate number, so it would be less than that.
Whatever.
So I, 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 we're gonna look for.
So we will have bids on Friday for the.
So let's work so we can give them an accurate number, but even that, it's not gonna be accurate, because if we're thinking about commingling things. We're gonna have to divide and.
The one thing that surprised me a little bit was, I think it was about a month ago, when we first put it out, within two weeks. I get a swore that somebody had said we were around fifteen hundred votes. It was not that big, uh, because I was gonna say, how in the hell did we go from fifteen hundred to sixteen twenty-one in a month? So it was not fifteen hundred.
Thirteen hundred at the meeting. The meeting we had at twenty-six, I think it was.
If you look at question.
That wasn't, wasn't a very big number.
If, if you look at question nine as a standalone, it's pretty much fifty-fifty.
Yeah.
I mean, it's like our national polls. Uh, that was surprising, it was that strong.
I, my biggest question that I had from residents that were reaching out was, does this include? Our operation and maintenance and, and I know, I would like, yes, but let me follow with Chelsea, because I was getting that so many. That, that's all they wanted to know. Is that just capital, just building or that's all in it?
The, the, the one thing.
Gosh, everybody that had talked to, call me just to verify.
Sorry about that.
The only thing that, that surprised me was the, the town hall meeting. Uh, where were, where were that, where was that fifty percent?
There was thirty-seven people in there. I counted. There was no three hundred. I don't know who did the math on that one.
But my, my, my point was that the sentiment that I, on my own little scale, was running about nine, nine out of ten, no. Why there weren't more people.
So I, I was about seven out of ten and they came up to me afterward in the talk. I said, why didn't you say something? Because the overall sentiment in that group was negative.
Laura, can you go, can you go to, um, I think the second page where it's.
I'll say the people that supported it, that came out, and then I had a few actually from Stony Brook that came out, the lady that wanted Tony's opinion and later on she's. I don't need it anymore.
Yeah.
They were afraid to voice their opinion because, I mean, they were getting attacked. I mean, that's just point blank what was happening.
They were intimidated.
Can you just go to the question where? Can you just go to the question where it says, do you feel parks and recs? Whatever, yeah. Um. Go on.
This one?
Yeah, yeah.
Question six.
Yeah. So you've got
Pretty.
sixty percent of the, of Gateway feel that parks and recs are um, had value.
Agree or don't agree, right?
Yeah. And that's, that's, that's a pretty big amount. I, I mean, I can see, and look, I, I can see both sides of this. I mean, even more today because I'm over fifty, whereas twenty years ago, when I first moved into the community, you know, I was in my thirties, um, and had young kids. Um, I completely understand why over, what was it, sixty, seventy percent of those that voted no were retired. Uh, I get that, you know, there's fixed incomes, they're, you know, they're, they're not using these amenities. Um, but again, my position, and I wish we would have had these parks, you know, ten, fifteen years ago, when my kids could leverage it. I think it's just good for the community. Uh, if we can get that dollar amount down, uh, from eighty-eight to lower, I think that's reasonable. Um. I think when you look at what's going on in, in the surrounding area, I think we have to keep improving Gateway. And I, I've never heard anyone complain about housing prices increasing twenty, thirty, forty, even upwards of fifty percent some places in Gateway. No one's, no one's complaining about that. And if we want to keep Gateway, again, as our mission states, as a, as a community of choice, premier community, we have to do these types of things. And, and I think, um, you know, if we can get the price down a little bit more, um, uh, I, I just think it's something that's important. And I know not everyone agrees, uh, with this, but, you know, when you're looking at minimal costs, you know, per month, per household. Um, and it's just our job to, you know, to, to build this park out and to do it where it's not costing an arm and a leg. Um, but we might have to sacrifice in some other areas. It's just prioritization. It's just my two cents on it.
And, and I, and I think funding, I think we have a huge opportunity and I have been pushing this with staff, come to us with additional fundings and because we, we know we can cut, that's, we know that. But it, you know, the five of us are not gonna be going out there and looking for, for additional funding. So I think that's, I want to lay heavy on staff uh, to go out and do that for us. Um, in saying that, I think, I, while I understand the, Bob, you won the survey because this does impact in the budget and we.
You got a sense. If it's ninety-eight percent against from twenty-five hundred, but I'd just like to know that, that's all.
Okay.
I, I don't have any argument with that.
So you.
It doesn't even have to count. I mean, depending on.
Like I said, it's, it's a tool, like for me, it's gonna be the same thing. Okay. Um. Do you want any direction from us? Don't look anything.
Well.
Right now, we gotta get bids.
The bids come out on Friday.
So let's just wait on.
We can. So we can wait and bring you that. I, I was gonna have the numbers to you, but we had to extend the bid. Um, ultimately, that the numbers for the site work will have to come in. Um, I think the community is kind of waiting on an answer on if we're gonna proceed or not. And this does directly impact your budget. That's why I suggested this move, this be us higher than your next budget. So we've got a hundred plus thousand dollars in it for next year.
Now, all the bids that are on this are coming in under the admin building, correct?
Yes.
So when will we have like a, uh, a spreadsheet showing what the results of tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
We'll have it tomorrow?
Yeah, because the bid, the bid schedule that they, the bid form breaks out the, the, the different components.
Okay. And how many bidders do we have?
I don't know yet.
A little bit.
How many plan, how many plan holders do we have?
Sixty plus.
Oh.
Sixty?
Plus, plan holders on. You also have to understand.
That subs. How many prime contractors do we have?
I know of at least five big names in the game.
That's what I was. Yeah, we did five prime bidders.
See?
That's not bad.
And I have a question for Ed. Ed. Ed, I don't know how many meetings ago, you said, I want to serve it. I want to know exactly how much R and M is, uh, maintenance is going to be. I want to know exactly how much is, I'm on it. Okay. Have all of your issues been addressed now?
Yeah, um, I think the.
In one way or the other?
Yeah, the, the, the numbers of the operation and maintenance, the only thing that's up in the air, and I think everybody recognizes, is the issue of security. That, 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 that's problematic and that could be expensive. But the issues of the, the survey, it is, it is what it is. Uh, the fact that we can't determine if anybody stuffed the ballot box or did anything like that, it's a little bit, uh, different than I thought it might be, but the, uh, it is, it's, it's the same thing.
I can tell you that up until July fourth, it, it, it was, it's always been fifty-one, forty-nine. Um, up until, uh, I believe an email went out within Gateway Greens. It was favorable and then, uh, we saw an uptick in responses after and then it, it went, uh, favorable against the.
So it was, it was, it was so, so.
Unfavorable.
It was going, yes, and then, and, and I did talk to Chelsea and I did talk to Tony regarding the email. I think it's important. And that's another reason why it's a survey, but I do want us to follow up because I think it is our responsibility to continue to be transparent with the residents and educate the residents on what is out there. So I know Tony prepared some information and we maybe share it with the board later on because I think that email.
Yeah, I'll summarize. I have like two pages just for a detailed response. But basically one of the, I think, one of the important factors that was in Mr. Senior's presentation, not addressing all of them. Yeah, but, but one aspect was he said that the district issued a fifty-five million dollar bond and that's not, not correct at all. The district validated the ability to borrow up to fifty-five million dollars. But to date, the board, the district has only issued the two bond, the eleven million, seven-hundred-and-ten-thousand special assessment series bonds for Gateway and the one million, two-hundred-and-fifty-five-thousand special assessment bonds for Pelican Reserve. And that's all now. The district has the ability to issue up to the fifty-five million, but that's not happened yet.
But it is validating versus what?
Yeah, and, and that'll take place at board meetings.
Was it fifty-five billion or forty-five billion?
Fifty-five was validated. And if you recall also, it started off as an eighty-million-dollar validation.
Yeah.
And then the board had some further discussions and pared it down to fifty-five million-dollar validation, which means that's the ability to borrow. It's basically like a pre-approval by a lender. You don't have the money, but you have the ability to tap that money in the future.
So yeah, Ed, had you other questions?
So, uh, Flavia, are you interested in a vote by this board of whether it's going ahead with the park plan before we adopt the budget, which is being about a month?
Well, I think we left that out at the last meeting. I think we adjusted the twenty-twenty-five budget not to include.
No, it's there.
We didn't put any of those park costs in there at three-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars.
It's there.
The three-thirty?
Yes. And that.
Think we, I thought we, we dropped that out.
We put it in for the high water.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, okay.
So we did. And yeah.
Yeah. So, so that's something to come out. That, that is, that is not, that is not.
So my, your question was directed to me, right?
No, my point, my point was that cost.
I, I directed it to the chairperson.
Yeah, that cost is not gonna be incurred in twenty-twenty-five, or if it is, maybe a month or two at best.
It depends. If you, I mean, if you choose to proceed with the parks and rec stuff and depending on the time, I mean, we'll get the bid, we'll get the contractor on board, we'll find out what their timeline is. Um, they may choose to do all the site work in tandem and I know in the background, we could be working with Holmontes and Tetra Tech to get the other, the other bid, the vertical stuff, get that together and it, it very well, it could be the tail end of twenty.
It could be a percentage of three-hundred-and-thirty-thousand.
Yes.
Yes. So yeah, so I will be looking to go forward with this, knowing that I'm really interested in tomorrow's number and that's gonna indicate. So yes, I would like to, I would like to move forward. That doesn't mean it's gonna be a blank check, yes, to whatever the amount and then.
Then may I suggest that we have this as an agenda item on our, uh, first meeting in August where we usually have the, um, uh, the, uh.
It will be.
The workshop.
Because we won't.
The workshop starts at two o'clock.
On the first meeting. You'll have the bids that we receive tomorrow for, um, for your consideration, which includes the site work of the park stuff.
So I'd just like to have this as an agenda item in the workshop.
Send along.
For the actual budget.
But, but.
It can include other things also.
But when does the dead, dead nuts budget have to be done? At that first meeting or the second meeting?
Second.
Second meeting. Okay. So we don't have a lot of legal room.
So that's what I, I would say.
I agree. We do have that good discussion on the first, such that on the fifteenth, we smoothly can come up to a final number.
Okay, so we can add that item to the workshop.
And it's going to workshop and in decision.
Do you want this specifically or you just want a discussion of the parks?
I don't think we need to review this again.
Okay.
Well, except if we are, it's good to survey.
Yeah.
It was Pelican, yes, but we wouldn't.
Well, change.
Yeah.
Just stay in the line.
Yeah, the, 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 the capital cost, see what it's gonna be.
All right, we will add that to the workshop and advance of the budget discussion at the, uh, at the workshop.
Sounds good.
Okay. Uh, budget discussion. Carol, you have anything?
Yes, um. Uh, Ed Hedges, uh, sent an email to Laura about some corrections on version four of the Pelican one. And then they were made.
Yeah, they were.
Were they made before or after the P-PAC meeting?
I inadvertently attached version three to the P-PAC meeting. It was updated prior to the P-PAC meeting. So version four was put on and corrected with the changes that were made. So version four that P-PAC saw is the same version four that you saw at your last meeting in, or two weeks ago, no, last meeting in June. So it didn't change. They made, um, Pelican made change.
P-PAC just had their meeting a week ago.
But they requested the changes at their June meeting and I got them in in time to show them to you at your meeting at the end of June.
Okay.
And I attached the wrong version of the budget to their P-PAC meeting. I corrected it prior to the meeting. So they saw the same version that you have here.
So the.
This is exactly the same thing you looked at, at your meeting in June. Nothing has changed.
Okay. And there was a motion to recommend that version fo-, version four.
Correct.
To this board.
Correct.
It was good to go.
Yes.
And it's good to go.
Yep, they're, they are fully onboard.
Only thing that we've got, I don't want to beat a dead horse, but it's, it's gotta be taken care of. And hopefully the ramifications of it are gonna be minimal. You gotta get Arborwood out of those numbers. Got to get them out of there so that we know what it is. That's going to be problematic to some extent. You got a hundred and forty-six homes who are going to be exempt from the cost of the OO one. They're gonna be exempted. So a hundred and forty-six out, or a hundred and forty-six, hundred and forty-one, whatever it is, out of five thousand, two-hundred homes, it's probably like fleeting elephants, you know what? But it needs to be done.
So what I would suggest doing, because we have already set the high watermark, I mean, the costs, I don't, I don't know that we can do this in time. I'll have to talk to Russ.
Well, we, you have to.
You wouldn't, you wouldn't adjust one line item on the OO one.
If you, if you do, you end up with a budget shortfall is what happened to me. You can't spread among anybody else.
So, so keep in mind, we just talked about the solution to the problem. We're not gonna take and leave that three-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars in that budget. That's just insane. It's not gonna happen. I can see a half of it. That number alone probably equals the value of a hundred and forty-six homes.
Everything that would come out. So to get the rest of the board up to speed, um, what Mr. Tinkle is referring to is that interconnectivity rule. Arborwood Phase Three is, is within the district bounds. They've been paying into the general fund for the last couple of years. Uh, if we follow that interconnectivity rule, they technically don't have connectivity to Gateway or Griffin for that rule. So they, in turn, should not be paying into the.
That's an argument.
One of the arguments.
It's an argument how they have been.
They have them.
And they had.
They have.
They came to us for this. I think they went to you, right?
They have come to me, but they have indicated they're.
They have not come.
I thought they were going to be here tonight, but, but the issue is, I think they thought that it was gonna be brought up and would be resolved. That the issue of past year's mistakes, that, that's still on the table. I don't know where we go with that. Tony indicates to me that there's gonna be some liability of maybe it's up to four years.
Yeah.
But, but at this point in time, let's just take one issue at a time. Let's just make sure that they're taken care of. They have the same interconnectivity as anybody else. If you follow the rule as it exists, they should be.
So.
Role was specifically written for Pelican.
The, the question, the question is, it's your final budget hearing. Board has the ability to look at Arborwood at the people's request, look at the budget philosophy rule and decide yes or no, whether or not the board, this board in setting the assessments for this year believes it applies
To that.
To that, to them to not have them pay a certain piece of the O and M assessments.
We decide. That's part of the ruling. That's what you explained in the beginning of the meeting.
Yes.
Okay.
You, when you apply the rule, because I think it even says you apply the rule.
Again, yeah, I've done some of the math. I just don't think it's gonna be that big of an issue. I'm more worried about not them being reduced. I'm worried about OO one going up. But if we have these other cuts we're going to make, I think there's a latitude in there that we don't hit that go over the high watermark. That's what I'm trying to make sure we don't have happen.
But if they've been paying it and they haven't objected, I've heard nothing here, why are we even talking?
Well, they brought it to me as a board member and I'm bringing it up.
Oh, you're on the Arborwood board?
No.
No, they call them directly.
They just call me directly.
And, you know, tell them to come over here.
The president of the Arborwood Association did, uh, send an email in response to, I think, Ed's email saying, you know, keep him in the loop with what the end result is. So that's, that's the only communication I've had.
What, what, what?
They want to decide for them, like, let them come over here and speak and ask what they want. Like, why are we?
Well, the, the, the issue that would, would spur it all was when we sent out a, uh, letter that we didn't send to Pelican, the survey. They got it. And they're saying, what, what?
Well, they should have got it.
What's this all about?
Well, they should have got it because they pay.
But they're not supposed to.
No, no, okay, that's a whole other question.
But that's what the rule says. Yeah, yeah.
Right.
Did C-VI?
And the other thing I would like.
C-VI was already exempted.
Go ahead.
That's the problem.
We just have a meeting. Go ahead.
The other thing I would like to request again at this meeting is that twenty-five percent of the increased percentages of that payroll that staff is spending on Pelican be put in a reserve account specifically labeled for that so that can't be used for anything else. And if at some point when we start clocking our hours and figuring everything out, how much of the staff time Pelican actually uses, that, that will be in reserve to, if, if we have to pay more and rightfully so, it'll be there so we can use it. But so that P-PAC can really hone in on its subcommittees and say to them, hey, we have to live within this amount of money for staff time.
So Carol, that'll ha-, that transfer will happen after the fiscal year, after the budget gets adopted. It'll, that transfer out of that line item will hap- happen later.
But we're gonna do it?
If you want to, if the board wants to.
Laura said it will, it will be very complicated.
Yeah.
I thought that was a.
That was. So the, the, the assessments are gonna be, as long as you don't change the staffing percentages, will be assessed that way. And then Pelican will have, all of that money will be in the Pelican fund. If you, if the, this board wants to make a transfer within the fund and just move it to a different line item.
It can be done later on.
But then the money's gonna go back if we're shortfall.
Right. I mean, you're better off just leaving it on the budget lines for the salary and at the end of the year, it's not used, it wasn't in the reserves.
That's.
That's what we agreed on the last time, but she's asking for, again, to us to revisit that decision that we already made.
Okay, I'm into this.
Okay.
Right?
I may. Keep Carol's mind open and go to this item two, Staffing B A B Plan. Staffing Plan. And I would just like to call your attention, this is what we voted on. And you may still like that, but I want to make sure you understand where I'm coming from. If you look on, uh, the very first item, which is Chelsea, her increase was a hundred percent this year. Drop down, uh, two lines and there was another, there was nothing changed for Laura and that's the one that's probably the most misrepresented because it is more. But anyway, the next one's up a hundred percent, a hundred and twenty-five percent, a hundred percent. Then we get down into the public works, a hundred and fifty, forty, and two hundred. Now, just keep those numbers rolling through your mind. Now, share the next sheet. This is what I received from the district to support those numbers. Not saying they're good, bad, or indifferent. This is what the decision that we made was based on. Julie Fitz, admin processing, invoice, et cetera. That's it. He says it's forty percent. Go to the next sheet. This is what Georgia said she was doing. And all the numbers, she says roughly at that time was forty-five percent. I, I'm not gonna argue what she thought it was, but there's no data other than this. Go to the next sheet. I asked what, uh, Daniel was doing. Roll it up. Take this one last, go to the back sheets, just flip them quickly. This was Daniel's schedule from every month from September twenty-three through, I guess it was July. So now back up three sheets to page two nineteen. I took all those sheets individually, again, they're not mine, that's theirs, and I went through and said, what was the vote at the Pelican? You have two hours, one month, a week, two hours the next week. When I totaled all these up, it came to two point one hours. For nineteen, twenty, twenty-three, and then when I went to twenty twenty-four, it's one point nine seven hours. Wait, what?
Okay, go ahead.
Hours per week.
That, that's right. That's what the staff gave me to support the two hundred percent increase.
And was the conversation that that was what was in the schedule and there were items that were not listed on the schedule? Cause I do remember that conversation.
I didn't ask.
Get your lady name right.
Red, black.
I understand that you can pull out a lot of caveats, uh, Flavia. I didn't give any qualifications. I said, you made this record, that's all I got. I'm not saying it's a hundred percent, but that's what I got. So I can't go to two hundred percent increase when I'm seeing somebody at two hours a week. Okay. I just wanted you all to understand, I wasn't trying to be totally unreasonable about it.
What, Laura? So. My sheet here, um.
But, but that's different because we didn't have that when we voted. I'm not saying there might be great data.
To track it going forward.
But we didn't have it when you increased it. That's my whole point.
But we didn't have the.
Not like it wasn't happening, we just weren't tracking it. So as you can see. This is just, this is stuff we said Chelsea had to start on the twentieth, twenty-first of, of, uh, May. So there's actually a day missing in this first week. So these are, the, an average hour we should have, like, this is for. Twenty-four, Chelsea should average two, I should have six, Daniel, whatever. So I add them all together. So we should have a total of eighty-two hours a week at Pelican. Obviously, these in yellow are less because there was a holiday or whatever. But so if I add all these up.
And so we didn't have a guy there for four months.
I'm only tracking a hundred percent from the days we were tracking, which you did have someone there. There was someone in Pelican when we were tracking these hours. This is from May. So this is only for these are done down here. So if I take. This down here, you can see every single week we are well over the hours that we should be putting in at Pelican according to our budgeted hours. The red here shows that we are over like this week forty hours. And this does not include holidays or paid time off. So these are hours that people actually physically worked to doing something in or for Pelican. So we are well over.
Mine is that we're doing the tracking at the end of the year, it all.
Yep.
All comes out.
And this, so this justifies what we gave as our percents for the budget. I didn't have them in writing. The way that Bob wanted to see them, but you can clearly see it's happening.
I want to reiterate the comment that Chelsea Flavia made is. What is, you got called Chelsea, so I wanna make sure we're on the same page. But it's definitely. The items that. Were on Daniel's calendar do not totally encompass everything that he does for Pelican.
I understand.
So, and that was.
That's what you gave.
And, and, and I told you that verbally. I just don't want that misconstrued.
You told me that after I had and wrote, wrote this up.
No, I, I think, no, we said at the meeting, because I didn't have a conversation, I didn't have a conversation with Chelsea on this. It was at the meeting.
This calendar did not come with any cabinet.
Verbally mentioned that here, that it did not have yet.
Yep.
So either way, we're tracking, we've been tracking, we're gonna continue to track. We can true it up at the end of the year if that's what the board wishes. If we're over under, whatever that may be.
I have absolutely.
Giving this, cause I think to help with Carol's point, on a monthly, like this should be included on.
Cause I think that would help you, right? Subcommittee.
Yeah.
So I think, cause then it'll be on a monthly adjustment instead of waiting and like, hey, reserve it in the year, not let's pay. I think it's more important that you be able to adjust faster than waiting, you know, six months. So I think this, I'm just suggesting this should go to them.
Yeah.
Cause we're, we're what, two months away from the end of the year?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. It's, it's.
Well, we should go to John.
Okay.
Yep, so explain this to me right now. This is saying.
I, I guess I don't understand if, why can't you take the percentages that you have there? Times the salaries and the payroll and all that sort of stuff. That will give you a figure of some sort. One hundred thousand dollars. I'll use one hundred thousand dollars. I'm just pulling that figure out of the air. Why can't you take twenty-five percent of that or twenty-five thousand dollars and put it in a reserve count?
Cause it's not just salaries, it's FICA, it's, it's fringe, it's benefits, it's every single hour that's associated, you have fringe benefits to it now. Like I mentioned. That money will be budgeted and, and put into the P PAC fund. If P PAC says, I wanna move twenty-five thousand dollars of those salary, that salary line item budget to another line item. It's, it's more work, that's all it is. And if we end up moving the money back, I mean, it, but I believe the board's already opined and said.
We did, yeah.
Do what we're, do what we're doing.
And if you don't spend the money at the end of the year.
It's gonna go there anyway. Items, it's gonna go into your reserves. So you're gonna have it either way. It's just, it's making a lot of extra work for us to track it. To do it that way then versus just saying. These are the percentages we're budgeting for next year. The dollars are gonna go on these line items. If you don't end up using them by the end of the year, it's still your money. It just goes into reserves.
Okay, so based on your percentages. Can you say Chelsea, or okay, in one month. Chelsea should be giving ten hours to Pelican Preserve.
That's.
Laura should be giving forty-five. So and so should be giving so and so.
Yeah, so that's why I thought it would help.
Should be.
Yeah, it's for, you know, the budget hours is sixty-five.
Can we let Laura explain this sheet?
Yeah, I'd like to hear that.
So the way I did my math, eh, okay, this column here, this first column, the fiscal twenty-four percent, this comes right off the staffing sheet. So for fiscal twenty-four and Bob's sheet showed it as well. Five percent of Chelsea's time, fifteen percent of mine, ten percent of Daniel's, you can see all the way down. Um, so the total hours, which I took, so I took two, two thousand eighty hours, which is fifty-two weeks, forty hours a week. And multiplied it by the percent of whichever the person is. So for the total for all of twenty twenty-four, fiscal twenty-four. So she should, Chelsea should have a hundred and four hours. So I divided that by fifty-two, cause there's fifty-two weeks, which means she should average about two hours a week doing stuff in Pelican. Same logic all the way down the list. So what I did then is, so in total, if everybody gives the hours that they're supposed to give to Pelican, there should be eighty-two hours. Applied to Pelican, um, for work done over there.
Every week.
Every week. So as you can see, these in the white here show eighty-two hours. That's the budgeted hours. These are last because we didn't start tracking until Tuesday or there was a holiday. So I subtracted a day, so there are sixty-five point six hours. What we actually put in is this category. So we only had four days and we worked a hundred and six hours. We should have put in eighty-two for a five-day week. We had a hundred and six hours for a four-day week. Which means we went over forty hours in that first week. The second week, same situation because it was Memorial Day. We did eighty-eight hours in four days. When we should do eighty-two hours for five days. So we were over twenty-two, almost twenty-three hours for that week. The next week was a full week. We went over almost twenty hours. This one here, I was on PTO, which was a big chunk of the time usually. And I think Daniel was out and Randy was out as well. So that's why we only went over such a small amount that week. Uh, the next week, again, you can see eighty-two hours. We put in ninety-four, almost ninety-five hours. This one was eighty-two. There was a hundred and eleven. And this last week was the Fourth of July. So we did ninety hours over four days. When we're only budgeted to do eighty-two hours for five days.
Okay, so when you're, when you're counting your hours. If there's a P PAC meeting like there was last week.
Yep.
And, uh, you were here.
Mm-hmm.
And Daniel was here in person. And Chelsea was on the line, Georgia was on the line, and was there anybody else on the line?
I don't remember.
That's four people.
That's four people. So there were only five people here for the make the quorum of the committee. That's as many staff almost as people here.
Mm-hmm.
Is it necessary? And, and I'm, I'm assuming that you guys charged for the length of the meeting, which was two hours.
Well, I did because I was here. So I was here running the meeting, so my time absolutely got tired. Because we're expected to be in attendance and answer questions during the meeting.
I think staff should be emailing them on a weekly, so then they can, cause they're preparing this on a weekly anyways.
Right.
Yeah.
So that they can adjust, like the, the sooner they actually see this and then they can ask the questions and validate if that, because that's what's gonna happen in the beginning. Which is fine, which is normal process. So I think in a weekly, they should be receiving this. And then they can have the conversation with themselves and try to adjust and then.
But what I don't want, Flavia.
Yeah, that's on them.
What I don't want though, is the questioning of staff is why did it take you two hours to do this? Or why did it take you one hour to do this? Because that's not their role.
No, I don't think that's.
Well, wait, wait a minute, wait, whoa, 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 back up. If you're sending more than one person to a meeting. You're sending the wrong person. There is no reason that I can't attend the meeting on behalf of this group and tell everybody what needed to be done. Why do I need five people there to hear and see the same thing?
No problem. Is that what you're requesting? Cause you're gonna get that.
Well, yeah, that's what we go to.
We can do that, cause we, we had prior to you being here, like we had one person. And then what happened was. Go call him, go call him, go call him. At the end, it was all back. So that's the direction, cause you remember that Laura, right?
Now remember, remember, everybody's meeting, agenda at that. Come prepared. Whoever's gonna be there, just make sure they're prepared. Now, the other thing I would challenge.
And that's on P PACs.
Yeah.
So that's not staff to say, read your agenda and make sure, sure you ask questions ahead of time or whatever. That's on P PAC.
Okay.
So we want to put some pressure on P PAC to live.
I think once they see this.
Efficient uses of the staff.
Right.
I think when they see this, it's gonna be an eye opener, because it is double almost on everything. And it's only not double with the ones that took up the, the time off.
And what, what I see as this challenge is to become more efficient. I, I'm not talking to them. I'm just saying to people.
And it works all the way around, cause it allows them to have more time for other stuff, because God knows we have enough projects.
But I would challenge, you know, and I'm not gonna nitpick each of them, but I know that L spends zero time on Pelican. Maybe a phone call.
And they, and that shows in the tracking, she has maybe an hour here, maybe an hour there, so.
For what?
I, half an hour for a meeting or something.
Well, no, she does not attend any meetings for us.
She does some things over there.
Everything. There was a period of time where L was not even authorized to come over to Pelican without permission. Not her personally, but that's the way it was, because we're trying to set up the legitimacy of the community. And if you go back any minutes, there was a motion through by the board. That all things related to water in Pelican will be handled by Pelican. So I'm, I'm getting into those kind of things.
So.
Landscaping, again, there's no, and landscaping, we have a very adequate and robust landscape. We don't need anything.
Until it's time to enforce the contract.
Okay, but that's every three years. That's not.
No, no, no.
Enforcement, not, not issuance, enforcement of it.
If the P PAC people say they need you to do the enforcement, absolutely charge us. If you don't hear that.
Enforcement, if the staff is out there on the field, they.
We don't want the staff out there in the.
We don't have, that's, that's the problem. You don't.
We do have the right. We have people doing it for free.
And I understand that, but it is our responsibility, not those people's responsibility. It's our.
There we will disagree. If we have somebody doing it for nothing.
Whose responsibility is to ensure the enforcement is, i- i- it's happening? Is it staff or committee and volunteers?
It's also the district.
The district.
District manager, now the committee. What we need to have the district saying, it's okay for this long. We've done ponds for fifteen years, and you're telling me now I have to bring it over here?
No, I'm, I'm saying that if, I'm saying if Laura goes over there to deliver a document.
Not Laura, we're talking.
But I'm, I'm giving you an example. So Laura's gonna there and, and, and delivers a document. She sees something wrong with ponds. She can email your committee, but she's also gonna email Alan Daniel.
Why?
Because they're the one that work for the district.
The committee will handle it.
But that is not the committee. I understand. I'm not saying they're gonna be excluded. I'm saying that they get.
Not their, in, oh, Flavia, that's their job. That's what they do.
But that, but we pay Daniel and we pay Alfred.
We don't wanna pay for that. You're missing the whole point. We have people with the resources, knowledge and talent to do it.
And I'm not saying you don't. I'm saying that.
We want to use those talents and those resources.
They don't take actions and they don't make decisions. They make suggestions and staff. Will make the decisions, the board, you know, implemented decisions made by the board. And I think that's what's missing. And I'll be really honest with you, I'm. I'm really trying to hold my, I've been attending the meetings with Pelican more often. And I'm not necessarily happy with the things that I see. But it's been short, it's been only three months. I'm gonna continue to attend. I think there's a lot of mingling of things that shouldn't be mingling. I think there's.
What do you mean, something broken?
Oh, I think so. And I'll.
How's it affecting the district? What is, what do you think that's broken?
Oh, I don't think I necessarily wanna put that lender out today. You do not want me to do that.
Well, you just.
You don't want me to do that. And I wanna be fair, and I think I have done my job. I always wanna be fair. I wanna give more time. Because there's a lot of new people, there's up new things. So I wanna take all of that in consideration, Bob, but you attend the meetings and you're there and you see what I see. I mean.
Problem, that's why I don't know what you're saying. That's why I'm asking. And since I can't talk to anybody other than the meeting, spit it out.
No, I will. I will give you a timeframe. I don't think it'll be fair for you, cause you wouldn't want me to give you what I see.
Absolutely want to hear.
Oh, I, 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 specifically, I think you, a lot of times. Influence your, the committee. I think a lot of times you almost make yourself like you are part of the committee.
And up there as a resident, not as a coordinator.
There is, that's what I'm saying. There is no clear line. I'll give you one example. The meeting that I attended at Pelican, when you had one resident had to wait for public comment, when. Other people did not have to wait for public comment and that was you. So. It, there was just not a clear division of this is the committee. And this is the people in attendance, which could be board members and they can have the right to speak as board members and it's because residents. That's not what I'm saying. But I'm saying it is great and I saw it firsthand. That was one meeting and I, that's why I don't think it's fair, because it could be a one-off. That's why I wanted to attend more meetings and see, is it a pattern here? And then we addressed it.
Missing what you're saying.
Okay, so I'll, I will say this, was that meeting recorded?
Yes.
Then I, I will, I will ask the board to review the meeting at their leisure. And see it and say, Flavia, I don't agree or Flavia, I agree. I, I, I see that, that there's, it's not clear. To me, it was not clear. And I'm involved and it wasn't clear to me. Imagine somebody that attends it that is not that involved.
Now, go, but put your fifteen-year hat on. And when Pelican was putting in aeration in the ponds, we did nothing over here. All brought in front of us, we did nothing. When Pelican cleaned the pipes and got a routine of cleaning the pipes, it was all brought over here. Of course, Pelican paid for all of it. Nobody did anything over here. And now all these things they did, and now we're saying.
It's not the action, it's the procedure that I'm concerned. It's not the action. It's the.
But you're saying that the people that made all of those actions should not have been making it. They should have been coming over here for somebody.
Didn't say that. I, I said it's staff needs to be informed and looked into it.
Years, why we, we did water and eat them. Why are we now?
Because we, we are trying to elevate, like.
We don't want you to elevate.
I'm, I'm just gonna say something. If you guys don't wanna be a part of this, this, this district succeed. No, I will totally let you. If you can, a hundred percent, Bob, this, I hear this, I've heard it for fifteen years. I am sick of it. This is one freaking district.
But the district doesn't wanna enforce letoral rules.
I'm sorry?
The district doesn't want to.
We do.
No, no, we made concessions because his area didn't want them.
No, because the committee, I wouldn't, I would have take that, it was in head. We had a committee. I was part of that committee. We hold this, we hold the vendor accountable and here and there we don't, but that was voted on. And to be honest with you, because you are part of the district, your, your Pelican should be following those guidelines and you're not.
I do than you.
You're not.
We are.
When it comes to. When he.
Letorals are in every pond at all.
I, here's the thing, I personally don't disagree with the letorals. I, if it was up to me and I'd move out, I want to letorals all the way a hundred percent around and I wouldn't trim them, I wouldn't do anything. That is my personal opinion. However, the two-year committee, that, we did a lot of compromise, a lot. And I think we came out with a really good document for all of it.
And Pelican was excluded.
I, I remember Pelican was included and you guys never, I will go back to it.
You look at it, it says these rules do not apply to Pelican. Pelican again, we should, more sure, and that's the way they were.
Not on the document that we have. Pelican came to a meeting. Do you remember that, Ed? You, you guys came in the first meeting, you had five or six of them. The next meeting didn't show up. Next two years, not even one person from Pelican, because you guys said, this, we're gonna do what we want.
Right, we're gonna have letorals everywhere and you would, this group wouldn't do that.
Yeah.
So then we were excluded and the board said we were excluded and that was fine.
Oh, I don't think that's how the document is written, if it's sent correctly, but I do not recall the. But, but my problem is not with the action. I'm not saying this malice. I'm not saying it's the wrong action. If anything, we look up to what you guys do. But I'm thinking the process of doing things is what I'm concerned.
But the reason it's being done is that residents are doing it for nothing. And now we're being penalized and saying, okay, that's great that you people are doing it for nothing, but you're gonna pay us for, if we had done it anyway.
No, because I think it's a summary. I think if the staff was gonna do it from the beginning, I think they do take that, I mean, I wanna speak behalf of the staff, but I do think they. They, they, there's value on how they present and summarize things to staff.
I agree with that.
Yeah, so, so staff is just reviewing it. It's.
We're talking about. Do we need someone from here to come over there and look at a road and says it's got a problem? No. When we went and did the engineering study prior to engaging Tetra Tech. The ponds group reviewed all the ponds and they made a, a judgment on all of them. And that judgment was brought here and then we sent it to Tetra Tech to validate, which they did. And we're moving forward. We didn't need anybody.
But that's part of their job. That is their job description. That's what I'm trying to tell you. It's two different things. There's their job description is what's required of them. How are we gonna hold staff accountable for their job?
We're not.
I, I think, I, I mean, I.
I think we're building a dynasty here.
And we've got we've got a difference totally. And again, I go back to what I said earlier. This is one district. It's gotten out of hand.
Can I give an example?
Six thirty.
I'm sorry. Can I give an example? And and Bob and I tend to disagree on many things, but. The district, prime example, the Ameriscape contract. The district holds the contract, the district, not Mark Eversman, not. The state, not the land, not the landscape subcommittee, but the district told the contract with Ameriscape.
In favor of Pelican Preserve.
On behalf of Pelican Preserve, yes. Mark and his group oversee really the day to day, the ins and outs, what goes in, maintenance, things like that. But when it comes time to the enforcement of Ameriscape not performing. Mark Eversman does not have the authority to enforce that contract. That is the district. The district has to do that. And that's where there would be intervention between.
And how would the district know the contracts being not enforced?
Mark Eversman would notify. Correct, but he does not have the authority to.
But that's okay.
Enforce it. But but is that not how we operate right now?
Yeah.
And that's and that's exactly what I'm saying, but I'm not saying that staff is going to go out there and.
But 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 the hours that we're putting in. We're going back to that. We are incurring a hell of a cost for those few exceptions that pop up.
Well, and then back to my question. Now we're aware you guys will get this on a weekly basis. And if the if if the committees feel like they do not want. Four people in a meeting and rightly so.
I will.
We will also we will absolutely adjust it. And if they change their mind two months down the road that they do want three, there is no wrong answer here.
We've never.
Let them adjust as and and I get that. Let them adjust on on as they need it. They want to go cut it down to two, great. They want to cut it down to one, great. They want to go back to three. That's fine. Let them do that. They can do that. I have no problem with that.
Well, the issue is we're a cube.
Okay, well, you have my support. I'll come to the meeting and I'll tell them next time.
If we do that, we're going to accumulate the hours and there's going to be a true up at the end. That's. It's it's done.
It's going to be painful the first year, but then after that, the numbers.
I mean, we got some suggestions early on. Where you with uh the landscape group was submitting uh proposals or bids or we call. Few hours invoices. So they they fixed that. Instead of writing thirty, they wrote one masterly. That saves Julia a hell of a lot. We want suggestions like that, not because we're worried about Pelican paying for it, but because it's an inefficient way to do it.
Okay.
And I will make it a point with these.
I don't I I'm going to move on. I don't have anything on the budget. Do you? I'm not going to ask.
To change the budget based on what I gave you. It's very compelling.
I still won't take any money and put it.
No, they don't want to do that.
So the email weekly that you were referring to is to the chairs of the subcommittees and.
Whoever's chair all things you need that I I'll say to everybody.
The chairs and the chairman of P pack.
We'll charge the time that we're sending the email to Pelican.
He's throwing. She's just trying to disturb us. Moving on.
You don't want to tell everybody.
Okay.
Well, more than that, if I don't call her every day, she calls. Laura calls me at four twenty. You haven't called today. What's wrong?
I I leave at four. I don't call you.
All right, so this um monthly reports.
Send hours through our. That report hourly to the chairs.
Did you not want to talk about?
Just the chairs. Now, no, I don't want to talk about Stanford. Um. The. Report needs have some depth too. I mean. I've been going back and forth with Daniel. When I was getting a report, it said fixed a pot. Well, I'd like to know what pot or what road where. I don't think that's an unreasonable. If you're painting a monument, which monument?
Well, don't you have a committee that knows what all those things are?
I know what's. But I don't have anybody tracking. They're tracking the time.
Well, then then have that committee put in the notes.
No, 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 no.
Why? They're not.
You're charging me and now you're going to ask me to go and verify what you did? If you're charging me, you tell me what you did.
But.
I'm not charging that.
The issue is the detail that Mr. Deppard has been asking is above and beyond any detail that we provide for any other report that we do other than the monthly report. It is. Yes.
What is unreasonable? I painted monument number twelve.
They've done that. They put in that detail.
That they just started doing that. And that's good. I like that. But now if they're doing a pothole or a sidewalk repair, tell me where it was.
Okay, well, your original request was excessive because you asked for the linear feet of sidewalk that was being ground.
Well, yeah.
That was that was excessive. We can we I think we can come to terms that generic information is is good enough. We tell you the monument number. They've even identified the number M twelve per your Pelican.
That's great. That's wonderful. And that's what if it comes to the report that you just showed me, that if there's a second level of detail.
The amount of time that's taken them to compile that report Pelican is paying for.
Yes.
Okay, I just you're want to be clear on that, but the amount of detail.
Well, if you're going over there to paint a monument, how much time to take to write down one monument?
They had, but you were asking originally.
We'll get there. No, we'll get there.
Couldn't they just say, hey, because this is going to come out weekly now, right?
Yeah. What did they work on last week?
Okay, so couldn't they just say painted four monuments?
I want to know which monument. We are tracking because we got a tracking mechanism on every monument. So we know the last time we painted it. That committee has got all that laid out. Same thing with the cul-de-sacs. If you're upgrading a cul-de-sac uh landscape. You want to know that you're not doing the same cul-de-sac every year. There's a list that goes down and you only get the money every so often because we've got thirty nine cul-de-sacs. Well, you only can do five or six years. So it's important that you have a record. And when somebody calls up and says, I want my cul-de-sac done again, says, no, you were just done two years ago. We're not going to do you again for another three years. Now they can spend the money themselves. That's why the information is important.
But we should be creating like that uh information. We need to have that.
Well, I think we need to have it. That's why we want it.
Yeah.
Don't they have to give something like that to you just to say this is what I did this week?
The task, the tasks that are given to the maintenance staff come from the chairs. Or from the committees during the committee meetings. And so the detail that we were giving was not sufficient.
Right. Just wanted to be more robust.
And it was to the point where asking linear feet, all of the locations, how many grindings were being done, how many potholes, specific locations. Whereas generically, we're going to tell you Pelican Preserve Boulevard. If you can't see the pothole that was filled.
You. Well, Pelican Preserve Boulevard, two and a half miles long. To take a picture when you're filling it is not a big deal.
We're creating more work. We're creating.
No, 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 no. Absolutely not. It was all the way to the Palazzo. But then we will. I think we can work through that kind of knit stuff. But important thing for the go back to the cul-de-sacs. They don't do anything.
We don't touch this.
But we we Pelican needs to know which was the last one we did and how how much money to be spent.
And your landscape subcommittee.
And the landscape subcommittee are doing. And this is just going to supplement that like when they're painting a monument. This is something altogether. No.
I think we can find a middle ground here.
I hope so.
You give us a little more detail and you have to make.
We have staff. There's compromise.
No, no, no. I've convinced.
We're compromising.
Let's move on. All right. Where we at? Monthly reports?
Get anything for me?
You going to show it up here? Where?
Oh, uh, I do have the I do have an update on the roundabout camera. Um, that should be in by the end of the month. I've been working diligently with Verizon. And with the company that's going to be doing the installation to come up with a solution that. The 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 initial solution was depending on us being in in the flop like forever and the internet wouldn't have worked once we moved. So we came up with a completely standalone. We can be anywhere we want and the camera and everything will still work and report like it should at the speeds that it needs to.
Anything for us?
Only thing I the only thing I have is is uh and I already sent Dan a uh a note uh on one sixteen. Looks deplorable. I don't know what happened on one sixteen. And I did checks on the other parts. I didn't see anything anywhere near as bad as that one.
Okay.
So I don't know if it was something dumped on the golf course steel. I have no idea.
Yeah, it's it's been pretty rough out there with the golf course work. So there was a lot of stuff that I identified. Broken valley gutters to storm drains that are completely need to be cleaned. I walk, I drove out there the other day when I was going out to Santa Luis and I. Witnessed myself firsthand uh somebody digging out with a shovel one of the storm drains. So just so that they could get flow. We're working with the contractors to make sure we address the environmental issues that you brought up, so.
B M Ps. I don't think they even know what it is.
No, and then we're also we're also putting the code enforcement on them. I mean, that's going to be the one that's going to really enforce, making sure that they're.
Our our H O A today voted to have a meeting with the owner of the club and have a come to Jesus. We 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 can't do this anymore. This is ridiculous. We've told them so many times. You got to either put silk fences up or you got to get sod all the way around. But every time it rains, we end up with a whole wheelbarrow of sand in the street. And the first time it rains again, it's in the storm sewers. And we just spent four hundred and fifty thousand dollars cleaning those storm sewers. It's 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 absurd.
On it.
That's.
And the the water break we had in Pelican have a city of Fort Myers.
Yeah. Yeah.
I've got a bunch of pictures because they totally silted up. So we will make sure that that comes to the.
Out there on tree line.
No, this is. It's all tree line too, but inside.
It's about a quarter mile inside the game. I've already sent an R F A to the city and I followed up. Uh, they're aware of it. Need to get it out here and remedy the issue from where they made the corrections.
Okay.
We'll keep pushing. We'll put pressure on them.
Yeah, because I mean, it's terrible. We had a resident riding his bike. On the morning that that occurred, on the sidewalk and saw standing water, never thought to think of it. And he went totally in it with his bike. It was over his head.
Anything else for Mr. Potter?
Uh, we're going to do a a swirly review at the golf course next Wednesday, Friday, one day next week. At eight o'clock. So the swirly, the trailer and all the other things, the golf course is graciously going to consider allowing us. Stored on their property covered by a tar, May, June, July, August and September. So we'll try to do all of our swirly cleaning during that part of the year. So thank you for. Over here, we'll sort of.
Yeah, during the peak peak season over there, I'll get it out of their way.
Yeah, we don't want to work on a snowboard here.
And I will give kudos to when kudos to Bob has been uh great with trying to get that coordination with the golf course.
They're very easy to work with.
Thank you.
They have been extremely easy to work with.
Mr. Shaw, anything for utilities?
Only six, seven o'clock. Want to give you an hour?
Bill said it wasn't me in Pelican. Pilot pro I just want to touch pilot project. We're moving the gateway greens next week. It's coming along really well with the the meter box replacement. So knock on wood.
How many? How many different companies are we evaluating?
No, no, no. This is just the boxer.
Preparation for the meters.
We'll we'll welcome you with open arms to the other side of the tracks.
Yeah, so.
I'm sure you will.
The the vendor has been fantastic to work with. They really have.
They've done very well. There there's been very few.
There's some hardcore.
We saved you for that for a reason, okay? Uh, I just want to make mention. So staff over the last the last two days, three days today, including. Uh, we've all got our refresher courses on CPR first aid um in this room. So um everybody, everybody should be up.
Hope you never have to use.
I do us to too.
I'll whisper goodbye to you.
All right. Uh, strategic, so strategic.
I'm coming back for you.
I got it till Trump comes on. We got plenty of time.
All right, so in anticipation of uh Lorna coming in October, um this we had staff update the strategic planning document. This is a in October.
October.
I will look at it under agenda management because I don't recall what they are. Um, had staff update this. This is a living, breathing document. I anticipate this to be updated when Lorna comes. Tony just provided a new um some new legislation that was passed that we have to work on. Adopting goals and objectives. So we'll try to incorporate this into that goals and objectives requirement. Uh, by the state legislature, because you know, they love to get into the nitty gritty. Um, but does anybody have any questions or. Um, have any comments regarding the strategic action plan? If not, we'll. Cue it up for when Lorna comes. Perfect. Loved loved that.
And I think when she is here, I think we need, there's there's a lot on there. I think we need to be more specific. Particularly for one year goals.
Yes, I agree. That would be good.
To hold anybody's feet to the fire when something sport could be done in two years.
Yeah.
Yeah, don't we we just we we don't need to bite off more than we can chew. Let's take one copy or two toppings and complete them.
Can you remember that when she comes?
With with some topics.
Yeah, you love those, Tony.
District attorney.
Yeah, just I'll quickly go through this as far as ma I'll call it the major items with regards to the uh. The Pelican Preserve, the infrastructure easement, that's all been finished. The easements have been signed. I think you sent them off to recording Chelsea or Laura. The P P C A easement, so they've been sent off to record. We haven't. You have the originals back or not?
The what?
Landscape maintenance agreement from uh P pack.
Today.
I was in a consent. Oh, okay. My mind is already done. I'm sorry.
It's out of your desk. It's done. But we we still have things to.
I know. Yeah. I knew you guys would do that.
Is that the end of it then?
No, we just realized we might have to get some monuments. We'll work through that. Bob and I are going to work through.
Yeah, something late breaking.
Yeah, I I I should be. We're following up and Zach's going to setting up a phone call to folks, the council for Genopee to wrap that up. That's the I T agreement. Uh, FPL can uh eat consent to use. Chelsea keeps nudging them to get that wrapped up uh in conjunction with the lay down agreement.
The uh FPL will be starting the conversion project Monday. North into Griffin, heading south.
Uh, the uh copying machine, I keep bugging them to get the bill of sale. I'll send another weekly email out to the uh those folks.
Holding up with my surplus.
I know because it's going to be part of. I'm with you. I will be contacting you. I haven't yet with regards to the one on ones to go with the policies and procedures. Hopefully before the end of this month, but may need to push it back a couple of weeks.
Okay, I.
Everything else.
I have. I tried twice with Chelsea, maybe three times to go over and she just keeps saying next week, next week. Because I have a lot of suggestions, edits and questions and I wanted her to go through her first.
Okay.
If I mean, I don't have a problem because if you can explain a reason and if I'm willing to go with it, then I won't necessarily bring it to you.
I'm fine either way.
Because I feel like a lot of those items, unless you can be with both of you at the same time, I don't have a problem with that neither. Just, but I have a lot.
Yeah, I guess.
My understanding this wasn't top priority, so that's.
Yeah.
Pushing you off.
He saw she saw the list I had like next week.
Okay, so two hour lunch is at the deal.
That's fine. We can schedule that.
Okay, like that. Uh, the uh, let's see. Still working on the. Advised RFQs, ITBs, ITQs, uh Chelsea utilizing a template from another. The whole solicitation process, different levels of formality for requesting services, annual commodities and or construction services. And uh. Yes.
That we were going to do in September.
We need to look at that.
Yeah, working with Nathan on that primarily, I guess, for a lot of the maintenance items.
That costs.
They came up pretty quickly. Stoney McRhodes, we we are still in the queue, but I'll follow up again with the Attorney General's Office. On the uh invoices from Katie Burkey, the attorney for Stony Brook. I had a good conversation with her and I just need to do a memo to Chelsea with the recommendation as to which invoices I believe are appropriate to be paid. It'll be the significant part of them.
I believe the board at a previous meeting said to whatever Tony said. So I don't I don't necessarily.
Bring it back to us. Okay, yeah.
Between what they've already paid out of their funds.
Yes. So I had a good conversation with Katie on that about two weeks ago.
So we'll get that wrapped up.
To wrap that up. The uh practices, the gate houses, the bomb ready to wrap it up. I was I got tied up with some other matters. Then it was Parkway. I sent an email, follow up email, the attorney for.
The monument signage of.
I'm I'm still waiting for all that.
Okay, so I had a conversation with JT and I know he was in attendance today, but he left. Um. The board does not recall. Their H A board does not recall us telling them that they needed to pay for the survey because I remember we had that conversation that that. So they want to work. So so that's why the delay is because they didn't know that they needed to do the survey because JT asked is like, hey, you know, follow.
I emailed them.
Well, the originally that, you know, three weeks ago, they told me that they didn't know and I follow up with Chelsea. Chelsea emailed them. And then Chelsea reminded them and she emailed them like the day after the meeting. So now I think Margaret had a concern. Because she said there was a resolution that was two thousand and fourteen that said that we took over the monuments. But is the it's the email that you got from Vince, which you clarified it's not it. So. The hold, that's what I told JT. The hold is on them to get the survey. Like, we're not going to do anything until they get the survey. They pay for it. Went above and beyond by providing, you know, estimate and survey. If they find somebody cheaper, they can go ahead and do it, but it's waiting on them. So. JT asked for a a a meeting with me and Chelsea onsite. And I said, just send us one and we'll go there.
Just did you recommend like Tim DeRiz or Dallas Santino at Grady Minor?
Arna.
Did you recommend as far as surveyors? Did you recommend?
I didn't. I don't recommend anybody, but I provided them the quote that I solicited from Grady Minor. And provided that to them. I mean, the the Friday after the board, this.
It was a nice day, yeah.
And then I followed up again. So I told them that if they found, I'm not pushing this one if they have another one that's more reasonably priced. That I said, all I need is the sketch and legal.
Do it.
And then you're out of the you're out of the monument ownership business.
Yeah, so I'll follow up with Chelsea and JT and then.
We. We did have some maintenance on it this week. The Y had come off and staff went out and glued it back.
There was tape on it. When I looked at it, I thought they changed the name.
Uh, we had to glue it back. Anyway. All right.
Uh, Danos Parkway Apartments, I just did a follow up email to the attorney for them as to whether or not they hit, uh, where they are as far as the alternate route through the FPL easement. I've not heard anything back yet.
Back up a little bit, Tony.
Yes.
Sir, uh, the Pelican Reserve financial dispute. We, is that moving anywhere? I mean.
So Laura did her number crunching detail analysis of all of the invoices from twenty, uh.
I did a thorough from twenty twenty through twenty twenty. Yeah, this will twenty twenty one and twenty.
Which.
Some prior.
Which is when the majority of the issues, which that is what we told the group at our last meeting that we, Laura was going to go back and do the detailed analysis. She has since completed that earlier this week. We've submitted that to our auditors and our team. We're waiting for them to review it. We're going to send that over to P P C A and hopefully have a follow up meeting and bring this to bed.
But order of magnitude, how much does it change?
Talk about it until after we.
Okay.
Meeting scheduled?
Not yet. I will reach out next week to schedule one.
Uh, under connection fees, uh, I need to push that memo back just to touch, uh, talk to Chelsea briefly about that utilization for the admin building. The, uh, six hundred thousand dollar restricted funds to pay for the S R F F F Y twenty five lake bank design that was taken care of today by the board action.
Yep.
The staff suggested changes to utility rules. I've begun that, not yet finished it. I will wrap it up next week so we can then have those, uh, that rule development and the rule hearing hopefully in the fall.
So what about the people?
Oh, people not need, not needed.
Be one with.
Well, we have a volunteer forum. We, we have a volunteer forum that Chelsea pared down for two pages. She did.
And the other change is we're going to transition that group from P P C A to our safety and security subcommittee.
Let me, let me give, let me give the total update.
Okay.
Oh.
So we.
And no, thank you.
Never easy, Carol.
Um. One of the conversations that we received, we had with Fay, when they were starting to evaluate. You recall, we had that old O and M agreement and they had insurance that listed the district as additional insured, covered blanket covered P per agreement covered under that insurance under the O and M. O and M agreement goes away, insurance goes away. So when we re, tried to reinstate this P per agreement, they went to their insurance provider because that was a requirement of the agreement. Their insurance provider said, we can't cover this. So that's what we were notified. So essentially their Pelican Preserve Emergency Response Team, which is a subcommittee of the HOA, who performs this duty will have to be enlisted as volunteers under our Safety and Security Subcommittee Volunteers. We have a, a two form waiver that was four pages that we got Tony down to two pages.
Changed the font size just a little.
Yeah, a little bit. Uh, that, that, that form, Safety and Security hasn't had a form and.
And will not have one next.
So we're going to take it to P pack. Um, we're going to finalize the form, disseminate that to, uh, Danny Clemmons, who is the head of P Pert. Uh, and we've found a, a way to not have any P Pert agreement. These volunteers are going to be volunteers of the district covered under our district insurance. Thank you, Laura, for reaching out to our carrier. So.
Yeah, the carrier said primarily find cover, just have a protocol. So the agreement had the volunteer to hold harmless and indemnification, uh, by the volunteers and.
I think it's no different than what we do now for our bonds back committee people.
Yeah, but, but then it has a protocol as to steps.
Yeah, when you see hours that were charged to Pelican, it's because I pared down to this four pages.
Let Tony charge all of it.
I did give P P as a right to add at their meeting, letting them know that that's what we were working on, that that was what we came to, and we were in the process of developing this form to move everything forward.
They could have a hurricane next week.
Well, I guess, if, if, if it comes out, if hurricane comes up, I think Chelsea and Laura, I think the boards are, would take the necessary steps to get the volunteers to sign it and then wait for any modification. Get it, get it in place. Yeah.
You will be.
I'll get them all signed up.
Yeah.
And Danny Clemmons is not the, the leader of people. He's on it.
Oh, I was on.
No, that was another guy. Dirk Dickman or something. He's got a new name, but whatever. The whole group.
Who is the leader?
I, I, this Dirk guy, I don't remember his name because I think it's his name.
Epperson?
Dickerman, Dickman.
I don't know.
It's not a name that rolls off the tongue and I've never had him in doing anything other than this, but he was the daddy rabbit of organizing the ball.
Yeah.
Now, one other question on that. I was just. Well, yeah, it's been, it's, it was residents alliance and she did, but they also do.
No.
They also do things like the P Pert group. Uh, they have a CB broadcast. So people, is that all included? Are we doing all this or are we just doing a guard house?
No, just the guardhouse, just their responsibilities at the guardhouse.
And I got to make sure that's clear with.
Minor roving.
We got to make sure that that's clear with Fay and all, that they continue to do those other things to support.
I sent Danny the form, the volunteer form to review the duties that these P Pert people will be doing.
And, and I'm sure he's focused on the guard check, not all of it. That's all I'm saying.
Oh yeah, just two more items like Chelsea mentioned, legislature, an infinite wisdom makes it mandatory for special districts by October first to establish various goals and objectives. And then every year beginning next year to indicate whether they've been achieved or failed or success. And so that's just one of those new tasks that the legislature decided. There are a number of also additional exemptions from the public records law. We've created a new template. I'll get it to Laura. And, uh, Chelsea, so when people submit documents, they can request to have information exempted. What?
Nothing. I had a frog in my throat.
I think she's lying.
Trying to get that by seven.
Trump's not out yet, like Bob said.
Don't say that.
Nothing. Yes, ma'am.
We canceled.
Okay, I did, I did had a conversation regarding timelines. Um.
Taiwan.
Taiwan. Chelsea, so I know, do you want to go over? I mean, Tony, I think we need to put some timelines for some of the items or all of the items because all, all I get from Chelsea, like I'm waiting on Tony, I'm waiting on Tony, I'm waiting on Tony. Um.
He's good at triaging, but there's a lot of things.
So I wasn't sure like what. I'm, I'm thinking, see, I'm not just blurring it out, whatever. Um, do we see a benefit on adding some timelines to this stuff? Or all of the items?
Deadline.
Deadlines is what I said. I meant deadlines. I'm hungry. Um.
Are you saying so like with Tetra Tech, where you have like a promised date and then.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be, that'd be fine. The only issue is a lot of times during the course of the day, I'll get hit with things that need to be done within an hour.
That would be me. That would be me. I will say I do that.
And yes.
Which then, then.
Which then throws off because.
Then, then, then it will be good because then you'll come back and you say, fly, those are my deadlines, but Chelsea doesn't stop. I mean, I'm going to have no problems with that. Right? So maybe something similar, just because there were a few things like easement and like little small stuff that it's like.
They linger.
Uh, yeah, like a year old, you know, and then it's not priority, but it is at the same time when it's a year passed by. So.
I, I think it's hard to track. Prioritizing at the board level because the board level and, and my, uh, my day to day with Tony, like the other day, we had to push out and I needed his immediate review of the addendum to extend the deadline for the admin building. I mean, that was like, he jumped on it.
I think forty five minutes.
Yeah, I called back and but Tony, Tony dumped it.
Random items that have been there for a while that I, I was like, Chelsea, you need to follow up on this. And then some stuff she was not even aware. And I'm like, okay, you get a follow up with Tony on that. So I think that would help me because I am looking at this document and I think maybe if we could incorporate the same format that we have for Tetra Tech, I have no problem with that.
Yeah, I, I don't either. And I like, I like to have the deadlines and timeframes. Unfortunately, sometimes they do get pushed out longer than estimated.
That's all.
I agree. For example, like the Straggers, we just got additional documents in two weeks ago.
Tony, you're tying the noose in your own, not your own noose.
Add, add another column.
All right. Future agenda management. Anybody has any questions or I don't think you need to go.
The.
I'm.
I just want to.
They all read the agenda.
To talk about all of them.
Remind you, the president's council workshop for next week, for next week was canceled.
Due to lack of.
Lack of participation.
How many?
Three people signed up.
Four.
Four people signed up. So.
And we have a revised, um, but we have a revised, like the Georgia or Randy reached out to the cams and get the revised board information. I, I requested that a lot of times.
I believe that Jordan.
Just did within the last probably four to six weeks.
Yeah.
All the elections.
And I remember that Doug had mentioned, uh, that we would have posted something on Facebook or on our. You know, information that, you know, we were not having it, there's low attendance.
I didn't think like that.
I know they sent out a notification to everybody. They got the invitation of all the meetings and it was canceled.
Okay, that's fine.
Because I was on the, I was blind, I'm blind.
I, I got that one too.
Strategic planning is on October fourteenth.
Yes.
Yeah.
Hi. Everybody has anything on that? Hey, then I'll just go to supervise the comments. I know we took care of the item there. Carrie, you have anything?
What a look. Just a couple. Okay, we covered the swirling already. So I told you that we're getting close to that and be deployed. Uh, information only, Fort Myers Police, uh, Fire Department has, uh, what's called a vial of light program. They give you for free a container that you put in your refrigerator. It's called a vial. And in that container, you list all your medications, food allergies or anything like that. On the outside of the refrigerator, there's a magnet to tell first responders, look in the refrigerator, we have this. And on the front door, there's a sticker that goes under work that says, we participate in vial of light. So it's a, it's a great program. It's free.
South Carroll has it as well.
And we're doing it, uh, we're going to do it at Pelican Preserve on, I think, next Friday. And as part of that, we're also going to give out the magnets of the virtual.
That's city, not county.
That is city. But I think it'll apply anywhere.
That's a good idea.
Start with Jean and see.
The name of the girl on.
I, I asked South Carroll today if they do that and they said they offer, but if we're trying to do it in Wolf, she would get me in contact with somebody else.
Yeah. We, we got fifty the first time. I want to see what kind of reception we get, but just the information we're doing and it's part of the safety and security subcommittee that's doing it. Um, irrigation, Tony, sure, perk up. Uh, I still need any and as, any and all drawings on anything related to Pelican Reserve and irrigation, whether it is with you or R W A or Fibber McGee's closet up here. We talked a number of times about getting that thing scanned and I don't know where that stands. And I know it's a big task, but we need this folks. We got to put some resources into this.
Yeah, I think what we need to do is probably you and I sit, okay, sit down with Austin because Austin has known of the construction plans. Uh, then I give.
What I've asked of Bob is the list of ones that he doesn't have. And then what we can, we can look through our files and see.
Because the only thing I have.
Yes.
Are Prado, Pastoya and Barto Materita.
Yeah.
That's all. Now I got some other ones that I haven't researched.
Boulevard, I thought Cypress.
You gave me that, but I don't know that I, I got to find it.
Okay.
I think I get, I know I gave it to Austin.
Okay.
That's what I did with it. But I, he's going to, we need the daddy rabbit. We got to put resources behind this to get it done.
What I also do, I have a number of documents from R W A when they did the original phase. Uh, it's all like in CAD form, AutoCAD, D W T files. I can download all that and give it to you and Austin can.
Okay. Ago, I was looking for that stuff. I never could find it.
I'm going to, I'm going to stay with it.
I couldn't find.
I'll bother somebody. Even have to go to the Lennar's office. Um, there was a number of us at Pelican Preserve that have natural gas generators. As part of that program, we, we formed a group. It's thirty four of us and we get serviced twice a year. Once a year service is required to keep your warranty under the coverage. The second is, is just, you know, comfort, feeling good about it. So I contacted Chelsea because I want to make sure we're doing that for the natural gas generator at the guard check. I want them included in some kind of a program. And the other part of that is that when you have an emergency, there's a relationship. You know them, they know you, they're going to come because our people come very, very quickly.
And you want that.
You absolutely got to have it. So it morphed into Chelsea's now expanding it though, all the various generators we have at lift stations.
No, no, no. We are, we have an existing contract on our side for all of bills, you've generators and.
Okay.
Lifts. So I, I've tasked staff to look at our current pro, our current contract and see if it's less expensive than the price that you, you're getting. If not, we'll just go with.
Actually, it's dirt cheap, a hundred eighty five bucks a year. But, but definitely do that. And last but not least, uh, and I don't know this inappropriate comment, but I would like to have, without a lot of detail, what would be the steps required if Pelican decided to leave the C D D? I just want to get in my own mind, what, what would that take? Is there a template that says you got to go through these steps?
So you want to have a one, do you have a, you want to have a one on one with Tony and then.
Well, I don't, whatever, but it just, I don't want to do it behind the boards back. I want it in front.
I don't think it's behind, I don't.
Okay, your big, your biggest problem is, is the vote. You, you've got to have a hundred percent, uh, agreement by all the preholders.
Well, I've never heard that.
That's what's in the stack.
I think this city would have to have.
I don't want to question. I'd like to know. So thank you.
Yeah, I'll go through it because one ninety has a process for traction in the district.
And I've already gotten some information on it, but.
And then you also have to worry about.
I want the clip notes first.
You, you have to address what happens to the infrastructure. Where does that go?
Right.
Yeah. And, and the other party that's going to be taking over that.
Yeah.
Unless you become your own C D D like.
You buy it out.
Yeah.
It's an enterprise.
The panic is not good.
Well, and then again, you have a full way that serves well.
Okay.
But, okay.
And it's a favorite in the short term future.
It is.
A lot of people want it.
On, on the east side, it does.
No.
It would, yes.
I need.
Just connect.
No, the eastern portion would be the district. Your question is, could the district still be a service provider? Uh, that's a question.
That's easy. We serve within, without. That's, that's, that could be done.
Okay.
That's not.
So that's, that's all I got. I mean, I just want to know what it takes because I know I'm going to be inundated with questions. Thank you.
You want to cut ties with that back, huh?
I think I've made the offer.
Since you guys are putting, uh, artworks in our community that we don't want.
All right. Anything?
I have nothing.
Okay, so let's, I'm going to.